Except for I took the marker back. Okay, I found one that works.
Thank you.
That end is the fine end.
So which one do you want?
I would do the fine end.
Yeah, okay.
So that one is not present, doesn't mean we can't enroll them.
Okay. I have watched other commission meetings, would you care to join me in doing the pledge of allegiance before we start?
Yeah, fine with me.
I think it's a nice tradition and respectful thing to do if you'd like to join the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I will now call the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting, January 22nd, 2019, to order. On the agenda, we have called order 10 to 10:15, 10:15 to 10:30, Brandon Cochran from the ambulance service, 10:30 to 10:45, Lincoln Chamber of Commerce and Lincoln County Tourism Coalition with Kathy Crispin, 10:45 to 11, Leanne Bishop, the treasurer, 11 to 11:45, Michael O'Hare and Tanner Yost with Kirkman Michael for the highway department, 11:45 to noon, Steve Schneider, and 12 to 12:15, DDKs from Human Resources. I would like to add to the agenda, if we could get it approved, we will need to do about three separate executive sessions at the end, if that's alright with the commission, if we can have that approved, we just had some issues come up that will need reviewed in executive session, so could I add that to the agenda?
And also, apparently Jennifer got a few emails, so they're doing notebooks for you, and she was going to bring them down and see if she could come in, so I told Katie to tell her to come after.
At the end?
Yeah.
Okay, well, if she gets here before we're done, we'll have her first, and if not, the executive sessions I only have, or I have, are only maybe five to 10 minutes apiece.
Dealing with?
One would be an ambulance bill that was brought to me that needs reviewed by us, another one is just dealing with non-elected personnel, trying to clarify some roles there, and what else did I have? I guess there may be only two.
It was Jennifer, probably.
Potentially, I guess, if she has correspondence from the attorney, if not, it may just be that she distributes material to us that is privileged.
Okay.
But that would be, that wouldn't necessarily need a meeting. Anything else, Dawn? So I'll start with correspondence. District update newsletter from our county conservation district. Kansas organizational recyclers newsletter, conference sessions. Information, I'll just pass those along if you want to look at them. Thank you card from the highway department for the chamber bucks for the end of the year Christmas gift. And this would be the agenda for the Board of Trustees' hospital meeting. From January 15th, and I guess these would be the minutes.
That would be another meeting that you guys will need to appoint somebody to attend. I believe Terry was responsible for that.
Okay, so they are, let's see, would that be the third Tuesday?
I believe that's.
Looks like 6:00 PM. And we have some invoices. They are still billing to Mid-America Nursing Home from Arjo, A-R-J-O. So a floor lift. Let's see, two of them, one for $499.92 and another one for $694.92. I wonder if that would be a replacement or in addition.
I'm assuming a repair, but I think those lifts are more costly than that.
Performance assurance active floor lift, it has a serial number with it, both do, I don't know, maybe it is just. Oh, move DPS scale L, I can't decipher some of that jargon. Then there are some additional materials, a plastic locking mechanism, and then just something coded.
This is to fix the floor.
This would be for the nursing home for the lifts, like the.
The lift, okay.
Do they only have two? Do you know, Arjo, do they only have two?
I don't, I don't.
So it's either a repair or some kind of purchase, but there are two separate serial numbers, I think, yeah, those are the serial numbers there, so.
Well, that's good.
They either did something to both or bought parts for both.
Floor lifts, yeah.
A bill from Street Plumbing for Lincoln Park Manor. Serviceman checked the boiler and found the thermostat controls for outside temperature shut down, it was bad, so it was passed, so it was bypassed. In the spring, we will need to come back and redo the temperature controls, Street Plumbing for $162.50, Lincoln Building Supply, an outlet power strip for $1738, Lincoln Building Supply cable tie, $349, Lincoln Building Supply through the roof, I'm assuming that's some sort of wiring, $2397. Lincoln Building Supply. Is that the same one, Dawn? It's another one for $2397, and it says through the roof, would that just be the receipt? I don't, just a signature on the receipt, so those are, one's an invoice, one's a receipt. Do we have any objections to the bills? I guess we'll approve those, Dawn.
Move the initial, please.
Speaking of Lincoln Park Manor, Greg called and said the block roof on Old Hart was leaking, and that the contractor was there and had said it was hail damage, so Detective Kate Ham, you were supposed to come back out and look, but I'm not sure where that's at right now, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I talked to Greg too, I heard it, had a leak, with Terry Finch, I talked to him, he was last week when we had all that snow, and they were getting, I guess, S&amp;S roofing out of Slina, but they had to wait till it was dry enough, it was so wet and snowy, so I don't know when they're working on it, but I heard that too.
Okay. We will move on to the minutes from last week. Call to order, members present, minutes approved from the prior week, correspondence, council on aging bylaws, Jack Crispin resignation, well, I guess it's not resignation technically, non-continuing on the hospital board of trustees, so that's something that we need to do, is appoint someone, is that District 1, how do they appoint districts there? Because when we got our list for the last appointment, we just broke it up into who was ever in our district, is that 1?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be you.
What we're doing, what now?
We are going to need to replace Jack Crispin on the hospital board.
Okay.
So we need to put out an ad that there's an open position, and I guess you could talk to anyone.
For District 1?
Yes, on the hospital board, and that's, I believe, three-year term?
Yes, it will be.
And while we're talking about the hospital board too, I know Terry Finch used to go for the commission, right? And if it's all, I would volunteer to do that if Arjo and you think that's okay with you guys, I've already been asked by Alan Serene and them guys, just to come to a meeting, just to see how they operate, you know, and I said I would, but I want to, you know, deal with, tell you guys first.
So that's something you'd like to be involved with?
Yeah, I think so, if that's fine with you guys.
Yes. I, yeah, I move to appoint Randy Lowman as the commission representative to the hospital board.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass.
And on the District 1 appointee, should we advertise for that, or should I just ask somebody, or how should we do that?
I had requested that we start advertising board positions, something that was brought to me when I was running for office was that no one really knows ahead of time what positions are open, so we don't really know how much interest there is unless we actually ask for volunteers, so I believe we should advertise for two weeks and then maybe go from there, if there's anyone that you want to talk to personally.
I could personally talk to some people I know who may be interested, but I don't know if there's a policy or procedure, Arjo, do you know, anything on that?
No, those appointments are made in February.
Okay.
So, yeah, I would say we probably need to advertise that there will be a position open.
I think it seems nice and formal if they actually.
Yeah.
Right, and if they actually write in with correspondence saying.
Yeah.
We've had people kind of list their credentials or why they're interested, and I think that's.
Kind of like they did for the Lincoln Council on Aging.
Exactly, exactly.
But I think also if you know some people that you may want to visit with them, because I don't think there will be a long list.
Okay.
If you have somebody in mind, visit with them and see if they'd be interested, filling out an interest form.
Okay, is there a deadline time we need to have this done by?
We will appoint them in the last meeting in February.
Last meeting in February.
Take active first of March.
Okay, then I'll remember that.
So then they should probably have it to us around 18th, 20th of February, that would be the beginning or the middle of the week before we have our Monday meeting.
Okay.
The 20th would be that Wednesday before, so we could say by February 20th, would that be okay, Dawn? Okay, so that's taken care of, back to minutes. We approved the cost of living pay rates, we had an executive session with the transportation bus board, made another executive session, just extending that one. We waived the construction and demolition fees to the CD pit for Sylvan Grove Library renovations, we approved tax abatements, an amount of $1,489.82, the longevity payment was approved in the amount of $15,674.14. Oh, the reorganization of the board. With Randy Lowman joining us. Executive session with the county attorney. And that was regarding correspondence with Attorney Hay that we have hired out of Topeka. Continuing executive session on that particular phone call with him, highway department reported on OS 87 and OS 105. Council on Aging, Bob Lovelace presented the board members and we approved them, emergency management, David Doe gave us a written and oral report. Cindy Nelson spoke on the council of eight on aging. LEPC board appointments were done, Brandon Cochran, Jared Hensy, myself. And there was some public comment, and we will be changing Friday, March 29th, end of the month meeting to Thursday, March 28th. Any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I just have a question, what's LEPC again? Lincoln Emergency.
Local, did you say?
Lincoln.
Local emergency planning, okay, thank you, that's all. I gotta learn all these acronyms here.
I know.
I normally try to spell it out and then put the acronym behind it.
But that's fine, yeah, thank you, that's fine.
Was the longevity part okay that I fit with your comments, because I assumed that you wanted to.
Yeah, that's fine, I don't have any objection to that.
And if you don't want them, then I can strike them.
No, I appreciate that, that's fine. I have no additions or corrections that I see anywhere else. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from January 14th, 2019.
That's for, we'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second, it's moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes approved.
No, can I point something out?
Please.
On the council on aging, you guys appointed the two new members, but you didn't reappoint the three members that can go another term, so their term would have actually expired, so I think you need to reappoint them.
Into a new two-year term?
Yes.
Okay.
And I didn't think about that while you guys were doing that, so.
I would tell them that we are reappointing, I think it was Watson and Netch and whoever the other one was.
I have.
Bob Lovelace. To a second, two-year term.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion in the second to reappoint the continuing new terms of current board members. Charlene Watson, Nancy Netch, and Bob Lovelace for an additional two-year term, any further discussion? I would just like to point out that I think we do need to have a thorough investigation of what it means for the commission to continue appointing those board members, and maybe even look at what their reorganization plans are, I had asked maybe for a mission statement from them, which, go ahead.
I laid that on the table today.
Yeah, she gave us one there.
Oh.
It's probably my.
Oh, I see this, I'm sorry. Mission of the Lincoln County Council on Aging is to enhance quality of life by promoting independence, self-fulfillment, and health for older adults in Lincoln County through advocacy, education, and promoting appropriate community-based services. So what I'm reading there is they're not providing those services, they are an advocacy group that is, in effect, actually. I guess you'd call it a lobbying group, is pretty much what their purpose is then, and I think something similar is stated in their charter. So I think that we do, I just think in the future, in the next couple of months, we should explore that and just see maybe what the direction of that, where they're headed, because up until this point, they've received 100% of the mill levy for the elderly. There's no further discussion, all those in favor of the appointment, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Brandon, we have you next.
Trying to make this quick, I have several items due to disposition, I gave you three pages there before the meeting started, the first page is we have started a daily cleaning schedule, and that kind of lets you know what we're doing there to keep the station in good repair, so you have that information. We have increased and expanded our daily truck checks, just to be more thorough on that end of things. We will be starting a monthly inventory next week of the trucks and the supplies that go on the trucks, and that will be done monthly to make sure we keep out-of-date stuff off the truck and the current in-date stuff is on the truck on a regular basis. One of the other sheets I gave you was one of your past resolutions that I made notations onto the side, we have not changed our charges on EMS since October of 2013 was when that went into effect, I made some notes out to the side, I called around to several other surrounding EMS agencies, I got hold of Clay Center, or Clay County EMS.
These are the increases you're proposing?
That's the increases I'm proposing, the notations I've made to the side.
Okay.
I talked to Ellsworth EMS, I talked to Russell EMS, and I called Mitchell County EMS, but did not receive a call back from them, and I kind of looked at what they were charging and made a suggestion, suggestion of a proposed increase for you to look at for the near future, hopefully, and I did give Dawn a copy of everything that I gave you.
You could forgive my ignorance, but BLS and ALS?
Basic Life Support compared to Advanced Life Support.
Okay.
Basically, if it requires an AEMT or a paramedic, and if they need advanced level skills, then that would be an ALS charge, if the EMT can tech it, and it's just like a transfer where we're just monitoring vital signs and running oxygen on the way to another hospital, that's an ALS call.
Can an EMT A, is that what the?
AEMT.
An EMT perform ALS?
Absolutely.
Okay, so only your EMTs would be not able to go on a run, but why is ALS?
Depending on.
On the severity of the.
Scheduling and that too, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, maybe I'm getting you backwards here, but if for some reason I didn't have an ALS person available and had two BLS people on, which I tried my best not to do, and I know where I did too, then we wouldn't be able to charge ALS charges for that, but ALS people can tech BLS calls, so just because I'm the one.
I guess what I'm asking is the only non-ALS personnel and EMT, anything above that level is ALS qualified?
Right.
Okay.
But you can't charge ALS just because you're an AEMT or a paramedic, you have to justify it with the need for an IV or the need for a 12-day EKG, something has to be needed with that patient to qualify.
That qualifies under that, advanced, I got it, I got it, thank you.
The difference between emergent and non-emergent, most of our calls are going to be emergent, because they come in via 911 or they're short notice transfers from the hospital, those are all considered emergent, what would be non-emergent is, for instance, if the hospital was to call us and say, next Monday, we've got a transfer of a patient to Slina for testing, and they schedule it that far in advance, which gives me an opportunity to schedule other employees to take that, so I don't take my 911 crew out of service to do it, so that's the difference between emergent and non-emergent.
Okay.
So, yeah, if you guys want to think about that, consider those increases, that would be what I would propose. I called up to the clerk's office the other day, we were doing a verbal clean on the station, there's a pop machine in there that hasn't worked for several years, it was repaired once and didn't last very long, it kept freezing up on us, I anticipated it would cost more to replace it than what the pop machine was worth, and that pop machine was bought on memorial money, and all the income off the pop machine was put back into the memorial fund, I would like to get rid of that pop machine, it's just taking up space and collecting dust in the station, and it's hard to clean around, I've already got it pulled out and it's inside the fire bay, and I will load it in my personal pickup and haul it to the dump, if that's okay with you.
Are you proposing to replace it with anything?
No, we haven't had a working pop machine there for a year and a half, two years, so if people want pop, they can, under mighty mark, bring their own pop to the station.
I don't object to that.
I, yes, it needs to be removed if it's not being used.
Okay. My next item is, I needed a little bit of clarification between the status of part-time versus volunteer, and I'll give you, for instance, on that, I've got one employee that does 99% of my ALS need for paramedic, and she's being paid at a dollar fifty an hour less rate than the paramedic we have, and I was surprised that that falls on because she's considered volunteer status, and I'm looking for what defines volunteer status compared to part-time employee status.
Part-time employees take time, take that shift.
They're scheduled.
Scheduled, a scheduled shift.
So this is someone who is on call, I'm assuming?
Yeah, if she's available, we call her and she can come and run ALS calls for us if there's a paramedic needing something above what the scheduled person on shift can do.
Okay, so is it my understanding that we have a pay rate that we've approved for volunteer status?
Yes, there's a paid resolution.
Okay, could we pull that up and maybe discuss that next week when we look at increasing this resolution proposal, maybe we could just put that on the agenda and we'll do that all together.
And I'm not trying to encourage you one way or the other, I'm things I just needed to know so that I could explain to that employee why they were making so much less than someone else.
Oh, I think.
I was told that employee, because I said something, because she doesn't get holiday time or anything like that, and I was told that she specifically does not want to take call time, she does not want to be.
Right, because of the personal.
So you're not an employee if you're not able to be scheduled? You're a volunteer, I'm just reiterating, you're a volunteer if you're called in and you can come or not come, depending on that call, is what I'm assuming, so then this, this pay rate that we have for the volunteers, is that according to credentials?
Yes.
There's, okay, so we need to look at that, and then we need to look at this resolution 2013-18.
Next item on my list is, right along the lines with this, I've been approached by several of the volunteers in Sylvan Grove that do step up and go on calls, they've responded on calls with us, they'll respond for backup when we're out, they have not been being paid for any of that, or any of the standbys that they've been doing, so they do a lot of like the Sylvan Grove football standbys, they will come into Lincoln if we need assistance on standby here, and they'll help do standbys here for wrestling and football, apparently they have not, nobody's been turned in their time, and they have not been being paid for that. So we need to figure out what's going on there, and if I need to do some backtracking to figure out who hasn't been paid.
Has that been done in the past, and then it was just not done recently?
That's my understanding.
When Wendy was the ambulance director, she brought those times up, when I did payroll, I would call and ask the director, did any of these people have time, and he would tell me they didn't turn in the time.
So nothing was turned in to get paid at that, after a certain point, so.
And I know when Wendy was the director, she filled out their timesheet form based off the run sheets.
But basically what you're, oh, so. But basically what you're, oh, so you could go back and look at.
Yes.
And so for how many years is this?
Just in our current last directorship, the way I understand it.
So two years. Seventeen, all of seventeen, all of eighteen.
And that would include all the football standbys and stuff, too.
And they have building schools for those football standbys. Because the thing is, is they're supposed to pay attendance based upon our adopted policy, which I think you guys approved thirty and sixty, but I'm 100% sure I have to.
Dollars? Flat rate fee?
Yeah. And then we were supposed to build the schools and that changed a couple of years ago because the schools can't, something about their liability doesn't.
They're not to pay out. So we're paying 100% of whatever they're getting paid to be there.
The school still has to pay, but they have to pay the service instead of the individual.
Yes. And they.
So who's that payment go to?
The EMS service. It has to school pay.
The service to reimburse for.
So technically, we could calculate the difference of whatever we can distribute that income to the individuals and make up the difference.
We should be able to, yes.
Okay. Yeah, you have your work cut out for you.
I think it was set high enough that it's probably, because I think it was like a flat thirty dollars if it was four hours or less, or sixty dollars if it was more than four hours. So like the wrestling events, the football date may get a little bit more. And then we just build, so it's an in and an out, except for if there's a full-time crew. And if there's a full-time crew, because they couldn't get people, the volunteers, to do the standby and the full-time crew went down there, then they only get paid their hourly rate. They don't get their thirty dollars on top.
They don't get one rate.
That's double dipping.
Okay.
So maybe for those sporting events, they try to get a second crew. So then that way, if the ambulance is called out, your people at the station.
Were still available for 911 calls while they're on that standby, because some of them standbys can get lengthy. You know, a three-hour football standby or a six or seven-hour wrestling standby. You know, that can get pretty lengthy in it.
My only concern is when you calculate this total for the last two years and some, we don't have that budgeted in necessarily to come out of the payroll. So we need to know some numbers so we can discuss how that could be done. And it's obviously not then budgeted into this year's budget as well.
I don't think it's going to be an absorbent amount per employee, but it might be a fairly large amount when we add all together.
And that's what I'm saying. If we're covering from two years prior out of this year's budget, which did not include this year's for that standby time, plus, I'm just, yeah.
Because you're looking at two texts per run and two towns that have football games. And most schools have, what, ten, twelve football games a year?
Oh, and you're saying in any run where they were called out as volunteer at any point in time? In addition to the football games and such, wrestling and, okay, so you could come back to us with that?
I will do my best to come up with that.
Okay.
In line with that also, I was advised that we used to pay firefighters if they were called out for lift assist or if we didn't have, say, we had a large patient that we needed help with and two people on shifts couldn't pick up the patient.
So they're considered a volunteer for EMS at that time?
Correct. And that hasn't been being done also.
Okay. Do you have any way of?
Well, when we do our run sheets, we make a hard copy of all the attachable documents to, attached to the electronic run report. They're supposed to be writing down the run number and who all responded by radio number. So there's not names on it, but it's by radio number who responded. And then I should be able to go back and if they were, the texts that were writing the report, completed that properly, I would be able to see what volunteer responded with them.
So we've approved some regular payments. Are those like a set standard for someone who's responsible? Like, I'm just going to throw out a name. I know Ben Crackey has been on there a couple of times. We approve checks. So what is that for? That wasn't for calculated time? That was just a?
Ben Crackey also does the fire, so his would be the fire department.
So that wasn't under EMS at all? Okay.
The only thing with the fire guys that you have to be careful of is you have to go back and you have to figure out, because they cannot double dip. So if they turned it in as a fire, rather, because the fire department was paged out and the fire department paid, then the ambulance wouldn't pay. But, so that's where it gets a little tricky.
So if the ambulance was responding to a fire, you'd want to definitely check that the people there were already billed potentially through, okay.
And most, and the texts know that if it's, if we're responding on a fire call, there's firefighters and they don't write down their numbers for it. It's all.
As if you responded under EMS?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. This is a mess. I'm just going to say that.
It was brought to my attention via email and a phone call with Human Resources this morning that you're wanting to do weekly time sheets. Just wanted to voice my opinion on that, if that's okay. That is going to create more work for the supervisory. I spent about three hours going through the monthly time sheets and making corrections and for where people have made errors on their time sheets for the month. If you break it down into a weekly, yeah, you're not going to spend three hours every week, but it's still going to increase the amount of time required to complete time sheets.
Why are they making so many mistakes?
Lack of training in how to do it, and that's something I'm going to address.
Okay, so something that we also talked about, well, I talked about with HR, I should clarify, not the board, because we haven't made any decisions as a board, but when I spoke with HR, every department has a different time card. And so if we were to essentially come up with a universal time card, that may solve some of that problem. Because basically, somebody's calculating time sheets for different times. The employee is doing it, the supervisor is doing it, it's coming through HR, and then it's also getting input as data entry into our payroll. So we really need to cut down on all that duplicate work. I mean, it's, do you guys understand where I'm going with that? We don't have one time card for everybody to fill out. Each department has their own separate version.
Sense to have a universal time card.
Yeah. So that's good.
Some of the mistakes that I was having to correct were where the pay period starts on the 26th and goes through the 25th. You know, a lot of times that ends up in the middle of the week where they might have had a 24-hour shift earlier.
That splits that.
That splits in the middle of it, so they didn't write overtime down in the overtime slot on our time sheet, the way ours is done. That created an issue with me having to make some corrections.
Yeah, that's kind of a universal problem. I don't even like the overtime slot period. I wish that you guys would just put your hours worked and then we calculate off to the side what the overtime is. Because you also have employees that think that they earn overtime over 20 hours. You also have employees that think that anytime that they come in extra, they earn overtime for that and they don't, and so it confuses the issue.
It's got to be overtime after 40, and that's the way I count it, is the time sheets when I brought them.
So I might suggest that once we get a universal time card, that we do a training session on it. And that way, that would cut down on what you're saying is double checking their work.
There's a lot of extra, I'm sorry. There's a lot of extra time between the announcement, just correcting people's mistakes.
And recalculating. So that, that is going to come eventually, not, obviously, in the immediate timeframe. But we were also talking, the reason of turning in weekly time cards is so that they can calculate and then we may transition to doing more than once a month payroll. We had talked about this last year before we hired HR. It's been a request from some employees to be paid more often than once a month. It would also help to alleviate the massive amount of time that's spent for several days before payroll. It's like they go into frenzy mode for three days before payroll and nothing else gets done because there's so much time recalculating an entire month. Instead of doing it twice, then you're doing half the work two times. Does that make sense?
Speaking personally, I like getting paid once a month. I pay my bills at the beginning of every month and I'm done paying bills for the month. I don't have to budget between two different paychecks. And my suggestion this morning to her was basically, maybe we just turn in the time sheets a little sooner so that they don't have to. I require, and Brett was even requiring, that all the EMS employees have their time sheets turned into the department head by the 20th. And if I can get right on those and give them, she double-checked and get them turned into you by two days later, by the 22nd, that would allow more time for you to be able to.
Well, I mean, I know that you're in your position doing the supervisory work. You're looking at everyone's cumulatively, but if someone is taking two 24-hour shifts in a week, why can't they turn in that time card for one week at a time? I mean, they're not taking more than two 24-hour shifts, I assume.
It depends on whether they were held over on the call, whether they had, you know, sometimes you get a call at five o'clock in the morning.
I'm saying they're not scheduled for more than two.
No, they're not.
So if you have to do a little bit of adjusting because you were late early, et cetera, I mean, that doesn't seem very difficult for each individual employee to just say, "Every week, this is what I was scheduled for. This is the time I put in. Hand it over." I see what you're saying. You're saying you have to do everyone's every week then at that point.
I just know that as a supervisor, you're held accountable for your employees. So if you don't, if you aren't double-checking their work, then you aren't getting the job. So that's why I.
I understand that and I see what you're saying. I'm going to reiterate that the supervisory position is also taking a 24-hour shift at this point, correct? So that's why I had discussed in some prior meetings, the concept of a supervisor being there every day is a lot different than a 24-hour shift. So we're trying to look at that position and what that requires. If you're doing a 24-hour shift and you're out on a call for a long time of that 24 hours, of course, it's going to be hard for you to have one or two 24-hour shifts and calculate everyone's time for the week. But that's why the position of supervisor isn't necessarily, in my opinion, shouldn't necessarily be the same concept of just taking that 24-hour shift or two in a week.
Right.
You know, then it cuts down on your ability to do the logistical work and the paperwork. So I think that all needs discussed a little further.
And just in closing, the last thing that I had was I provided you with a copy of it. If that'd be very scheduled, I'm going to have to do it.
Thank you.
Do you need me to stay for the executive session on the EMS call?
You know, since Kathy's not here.
I'm actually.
Oh, you're in her, you're in her stay. I'm sorry. I didn't realize that.
She had an emergency, so.
I'm sorry.
I'm filling in.
Oh, yes, please. Yeah. Okay. No, come on up. Yeah.
I don't know if I'm supposed to come up or if I'm best to stay here. Haven't done this before. I'm just here on behalf of the Lincoln County Chamber of Commerce. I think historically, and I don't know how long this has been going on, the commission has given a thousand dollars that is split between the Tourism Coalition and the chamber to be used to run our offices to help promote the county. And so I'm just here, Nancy, we're kind of in a interim period with Nancy taking a new job and we haven't filled the position, so I apologize if I'm not handling this correctly.
So you're saying you're here to request 2019's money?
2019's money. I believe that you've already received an invoice for that. So you should have a paper invoice that would have come at the end of the year. And that it is just split 500 to the county chamber and 500 to the Tourism Coalition.
Okay. Any objections or questions? So I'd entertain a motion to distribute, do we distribute it in one lump sum and then we split?
Yes, we split it.
Okay. To distribute the thousand dollars to the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce, Commerce, excuse me, and Lincoln County Tourism Coalition.
So move.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
It's been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, please vote in favor by saying aye. Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I just ask one more question, not to you, Colleen, but before to DeeDee and Dawn? On the time cards things, would it be that much, if we went to say two weeks instead of a month, would it be that much more work for you guys to do that, Dawn and DeeDee?
My personal opinion is it wouldn't be more work. I think it would be better for me to have the weekly time cards where I can do the adjusting weekly, even on a daily basis. As far as the going to the two weeks, I don't think it would be any more work. As long as I had the time in between. Do you understand what I'm saying? Like, if they gave them to me three days before it was due every two weeks, that would probably create a chaos. But if I got them weekly where I could adjust.
So it'd be simpler, simpler for you if you could do it weekly?
If I had the ability to get in there and adjust any time I needed to, it would be a tremendous help.
May I interrupt? So part of what we talked about when we were talking about some of this time card idea is the fact that the system comtech that the county uses to enter the data for payroll is only open and available for working those last three days before all the information is due. So you kind of have to crunch it in right before you produce the results.
So you have a lot of one time.
Right. And, and so some of her frustration with it is that she can't daily manage, you can't just log in and see what's going on and correct it as time goes. But if the time cards were collected ahead of time, it at least could be manually calculated before all the data is required to be entered at the same time. Because what she's having an issue with is entering all the data and checking for errors at the same time when you're in a three-day time constraint. Does that make sense?
Yeah, good. No, thanks for that explanation.
That's like a lot of work in three days.
And also now you're saying like your EMS, you guys do a time sheet differently than, say, the county highway department, they're different. Yeah, that's not very efficient, is it, probably?
The only two departments that have matching time cards would be the health department and anybody in the courthouse. And everybody else, like the highway department is different, the sheriff's office is different, the EMTs are different, the whole department's different. Is it?
Part of the reason EMS' time card was different originally and we've just followed through with it is because we used to have more volunteers than what we have now. And we used to staff our truck in the evenings with volunteers when we did 12-hour shifts. So there's different slots on there for volunteerism basis, based on full-time or not full-time.
You have a special situation because you have this volunteer employment.
And 24/7.
Yeah. Whereas regular, like the highway departments, they're all full hires, right?
But where we don't have that situation so much anymore, I would totally agree that a universal time card would be great.
And even as Dawn said, if, if each individual isn't trying to calculate their own breakdown, let HR do that and when the data is entered into the program, it will, they will clarify that. Each person just needs to make sure they're accurate on when they got there, when they left, and what they did. As opposed to trying to calculate it and then they're checking to see if the original, right, you know, what they originally wrote down was correct, plus their calculations, and then go back and check that for everyone. It's kind of like triple the work. I mean.
Because as an employee myself, I go into my time sheet at the beginning of the month when the schedule comes out. So like the next shift I work, I'll be putting in February's schedule. I put it in and if there's any adjustments, I go back and adjust it on a shift basis.
And I think that's what DeeDee was trying to say she'd like to be able to do, is put in things weekly and edit as you go, instead of getting all the information at once, checking for errors and.
Three days have done.
Yeah.
Right.
I'll just say what the issue is. I was, I was given a bill from the ambulance service that is more than a year old and it was just mailed out. And I suppose this is because Delisa's has done it for us at this point. And what happened was someone got picked up and was told that they would be taken directly to Salina because of the severity of the incident, okay? And then what actually happened was they, the ambulance went to Lincoln first, shifted personnel, and then went to Salina. So they got billed twice. So they got billed, that, that run fee that you were just asking us to assess is the emergent run fee under whatever heading that was. This would probably be ALS Emergent 1 because of the number. So that person was billed two of those. One from their location to Lincoln and then another one from Lincoln to Salina because the care wasn't going to be provided here in-house or in county. So they're.
They did provide care. I spoke to that person, the hospital did.
Okay, so we need to discuss that, we need to discuss that portion in executive session, but I'm just making it be known that that's the controversy. But I, we probably won't get to that because we have Leanne here and then we definitely need to see Michael. So we have like four more people.
Good. I'm sure.
Okay. Leanne, if you're ready.
I'm ready.
Any balances for you?
Thank you.
And the resolutions.
Do I have two? Are these the same?
Yes, they are the same. One for Dawn and one for me.
Oh, for signing, for signing. Okay. Did they get resolutions?
No.
Okay. Where do you want to start?
Where do you want to start?
Do you have this bus board, excuse me, bus, transportation bus fund marked because we were, it's marked here? Is that a?
I think those are fire departments. And I was trying to get your totals for the fire departments, because you want.
Seventy-five. Is that transportation bus fund, county funds non-budgeted?
Mm-hmm. But isn't it eighty and the?
It's seventy-five and eighty-five you have marked.
Well, I have eighty to eighty-five marked because I was adding those totals.
Oh, between there. Okay, I thought underneath. Okay. Sorry.
That's okay.
I knew at one time what this, you know, you guys or somebody told me about this Della Pittard Bequest Fund.
Delia Pittard?
What is that again?
She was a lady from the Beverly area that when she died, she left a bequest to Lincoln County to help children with cleft palates.
Okay.
So the way I understand it is the principal money has to be used for that purpose, but.
We started at some point using the interest in making a children's healthcare fund that could be used for any kind of.
Other kind of.
Injuries or illness or whatever for children in our county.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
So if somebody, some child had a cleft palate in Lincoln County and needed surgery, that fund could pay for it all?
It's Pitterd.
Yeah, okay. Now, I'm, I'm new here, so I don't know this stuff. So you have abstract totals for basically last month, right at the top.
Well.
Eleven, one, two, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, the amount levied, um, what we've added on and what we've abated, that total divided by what we've collected.
Okay.
To tell you how much of the 2018 has already been collected. And that's not necessarily to say that the whole first half has been because some folks pay in full. But we've collected sixty-one percent.
Okay.
Of eighteen?
Eighteen.
Okay.
Is that low for the year, for, for a given year?
That's all right.
Okay.
But the date you have up there is like from, so the first of November to the end of December, that's a two-month timeframe, that's what this is from, okay.
Yeah.
Is that, so every two months you got one of these? Is that, no?
I just do it at the end of December just because that's our main.
Sure.
First half collection period, so you know where we're rolling.
Yeah, I just wanted to know.
But you said eighteen. Do you mean nineteen?
No, I mean eighteen.
We're only at sixty percent of eighteen and that's a normal collection by the end of the year?
Yeah, because you don't send out 2018 tax statements until mid-November. So then what you collect end of November and December is your first half collection for 2018. Then you don't owe for your second half until May 10th of 2019.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
And a lot of people don't pay, I got it, until the second half.
Second half, yes.
I see what you're saying.
So we are over fifty percent.
Sure, okay.
Because of whether or not they paid in full and/or half and, okay, I see.
Or not paying.
And wait to pay for this, yeah, or at all. Yeah.
Yeah.
So where are we, um, just looking back at the last few years since you've been here? As far as, under your summary of interest earned, not for checking, but in the CDs and money market accounts specifically your savings, are we about average or are we?
Let's say we're doing a lot better because when I took office, there were no county CDs because nothing, no CD paid. So that it was all in the money market because that was what was earning the most at that time. But.
What year did you come in?
Two thousand, I was elected in twelve, took office in thirteen.
Thirteen, okay.
October of thirteen.
And these CDs are obviously paying more now, right?
Yes, yes, they are.
When your CD becomes mature, do you shop around all these other banks to get the best deal or do you just go back to the same bank usually?
It's the best rate.
Best rate, okay.
Best rate.
Every time?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you do your, um, first commission conference yet or is that this week?
Yeah, I went to it.
You went already?
Just last Thursday.
It was last week, okay. Um, because one thing I learned, which I hadn't, I had not known that at all is that we're limited to invest in our local banks. So, our ability to shop around is limited within our county. It's county lines, right? It's not, you can't even go over county line. I mean, you can, your bank may branch that far, but it has to be a bank that is located, has a branch in your county.
Unless they won't insure, or they won't pledge for you to cover what you've got, then you can go out to the investment pool.
Do we ever have that scenario?
We never have that.
And also you're limited probably to like something that's secure, like CDs, right? Guaranteed.
Yes.
We couldn't go like to Jim Matt's probably and, uh, and go through the stock market, which may give us more money, but you could lose a lot too. So, yeah, shit's too risky. I just thought.
And I can only go out two years on a CD.
Yeah.
Two years maximum?
Yes.
Yeah, that, for a county like Lincoln, I mean, that kind of limits a lot of opportunity, especially when we have money in this investable dime. I mean, it's frustrating, I would think, I think.
Yes.
Probably think.
Of course, we're, if we're only investing in CDs, the CDs in Salina are not going to be that much better than here probably. Maybe, maybe a little bit.
No, but just the constraints in general. I mean, obviously there's a risk associated with investments, but if you're going to do it, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay, so moving on to the resolutions, if you don't have any more questions about her report.
That's all good.
Resolution 2019-2, 3, and 4. Number two, whereas on this 22nd day of January 2019, a duly assembled meeting of the County, uh, Board of County Commissioners in Lincoln County, Kansas, all members being present pursuant to KSA 91401, following resolution is adopted by said Board of County Commissioners of Lincoln County, Kansas, and the same to be record in the minutes of this meeting held on this 22nd day of January 2019. Be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Lincoln County, Kansas, designating the following financial institutions as depositories of all monies of Lincoln County, Kansas for the year 2019. The Bank of Tuskegee, Citizen State Bank and Trust, Bennington State Bank, Farmway Credit Union, Wilson State Bank, State Municipal Investment Pool, State of Kansas, adopted on this 22nd day of January 2019 and witness whereof we have herewith affixed our hand and sealed this 22nd day of January 2019. I have a motion to approve Resolution 2019-2. And this would be the standard resolution naming the banks within our, uh, area.
So move to approve.
I have a motion as second for Resolution 2019-2. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye. Aye. Approved. Resolution 2019-3, be it resolved on this 22nd day of January 2019 by the Board of County Commissioners of Lincoln County, Kansas. Leanne Bishop, Lincoln County Treasurer, shall develop and implement a cash management and investment program for the handling of monies in the custody of Lincoln County, Kansas for the year 2019. Money shall be invested as set forth in state law and the investment program shall be conducted in a businesslike manner and without preferential treatment of any person, firm, or corporation. Liquidity and maturity of all invested monies shall be such as to permit the prompt payment of all financial obligations of the county, excuse me, of the Lincoln County Treasurer and Lincoln County dated this 22nd day of January 2019. I would entertain a motion to approve 2019-3.
So move.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? I guess my, my question would be, that last statement, um, the liquidity and maturity of all invested money shall be such as to permit the prompt payment of financial obligations. In the event that the commission would be requesting to spend a large amount of money that you may have tied up in a CD. Yeah.
The banks will charge me a penalty, but I can get the money. But I try not to do that. Don't want to over.
And I would just make the statement that that would be a reason that we would consult with you before making any large investment repayment or having a plan to do that. And I'll just mention the nursing home in there. This year, we should be really be looking at that and seeing, you know, you just gave us the report here and you gave us the maturity dates of many of the CDs, but that should be something that we look at. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass. And Resolution 2019-4, the Board of County Commissioners of Lincoln County, Kansas, hereby pass a resolution on January 22nd, 2019, to allow Leanne Bishop, Lincoln County Treasurer, to invest idle funds as she sees feasible in Lincoln County banks or investments dated this 22nd day of January 2019. So that kind of just brings up the same question because the idle funds would be the ones that are expendable, not necessarily, these would be in addition to the budget if they're idle funds.
Do you usually have idle funds?
Idle funds are just the interest earned off of the accounts.
And what's, uh, what's that amount on an average basis? Oh, you showed it.
Yeah, in that report, there should be totals.
The idle funds.
Okay.
Interest earned on the idle funds.
For the quarter.
Right.
Yeah, for the quarter. Okay. I just, yeah.
But that's not the total of, well, the, okay, so my question is then, is the wind power money considered an idle fund? No?
I mean, it, its interest goes into a special fund that the board uses to do little grants and things for improvements.
So, so then this resolution for idle funds is only referring to interest that's already been.
County.
That's, that's been levied, levied money. So what is the title of the web fund money if it's not an idle fund?
It's a web fund in lieu of tax fund. It's in there.
Okay.
It has two, it has two funds. The web fund and the.
And the interest is earned. So then which one of these resolutions covers the investment in that is my question?
Well, really, it doesn't.
It does, yeah, it's not covered in here because this is for cash, this is for the banks, and this is for the idle funds. So it's a separate deal altogether. I'd entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2019-4 for the investment of idle funds by the treasurer. I move to approve.
Move. What do you, what do you say?
I need a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2019-4. Any further discussion? All those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass. So we need to sign all these. Did you have anything else, Leanne?
I don't think so.
So do we have any? So, okay, let me reword that. We actually have a set of instructions, for lack of a better term, for the interest on the web fund. But there is no resolution or any kind of basic policy that's set forth regarding the principal of the web fund. All we have are the contracts with the actual companies that makes the ill-lued tax payment.
There should be another set of resolutions.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. Put your report on top of it.
So when you're talking about the nursing home, does that kind of come out of the web fund?
Well, I would assume that if there's any monetary transaction to happen, that that's where the money would come from because we don't have anything budgeted for any expenses there except that line item out of the general fund. And that has been set at a hundred and twenty, I believe, again. I don't think we changed it. So, yes, I mean, if, if something is to transpire in this year of 2019, nothing is budgeted beyond a hundred and twenty. And I think we have it worked out. Where were we withdrawing the funds to pay for the auditing firm that we approved up to nine thousand? Was that out of Fund 44, Dawn?
No, that will come out of County General until it's gone and then it will come out of, since it's prior year expense. They can either, A, well, it'll come out of County General up until March. After that, then it'll have to come from 144.
Because up till March can be from, because we approved it in December or November, whatever month of, okay. So that was the first expense, but we have, we also have an additional attorney expense coming. And I think we've only made one payment out of that, so.
Yes, I have two bills to pay. One, one for the attorney and one for the ambulance.
Are we approving those individually as they come from him or is that just something that you pay because we've already hired him? Okay.
That will come out on your April.
Okay. So, yeah, just looking at your CD maturity numbers, you have two in February and then not until July for the others. And then. Is that the majority of them?
There's actually half a million sitting on the money market.
There's actually half a million sitting in the money market account, right?
Looks like so, yeah.
Little over half a million sitting in a money market account that is available.
So I should be okay to renew my CDs?
Well, that's.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't, I hope we're not going to spend over a million dollars on this effort. Assume that we can do it better than that, but, again, it appears that the money market accounts have enough money to do what looks like it may have to happen, yes.
Well, between the two money markets, there's well over a million.
I won't worry about it.
No, I don't need to worry about it.
I won't renew CDs at the best rate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready for you guys from the Highway Department. Thank you for waiting.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning.
Got all the roads cleaned off, I'm sure. With this wonderful weather.
Yeah. Keeps throwing.
Yeah, rough winter, something like that.
It is. And we did send the plow trucks out this morning to hit some hills, curves, and intersections on our county asphalt roads. Things iced up pretty good there this morning. Took us all by surprise, I think. I didn't think anybody expected it to come in like it did.
Update for Bridge OS eighty-seven, Goldenrod Bridge. KDOT has shut that project down due to an issue with storm water protection plan. Basically, what it sounds like, contractor wasn't doing the erosion control to the standard the state wanted, so they are stopping any progress on construction until all of those deficiencies get met by the contractor. The contractor's still getting charged working days for that, which I think it was estimated, what, about five days worth of work that was going to need to be done on erosion control to get to the point to where they could get released to go back to construction, which I think that's going to start putting the squeeze on them for working days and hopefully they'll be able to make up some time and not get charged liquidated damages. I guess that's about all I can say about it.
Does that, does that change your schedules on how you deal with anything with that?
Not really. You know, it's pretty much in KDOT and the contractor's hands until.
Okay.
Conclusion of construction and then, at, at some point, more than likely, I will take over as the stormwater manager on that and I will do the every two-week inspection and inspection after every rain of a half inch or more. I started doing that on this last bridge we did instead of paying a contractor to do it or the engineering firm to do it, so.
It usually goes to about what, seventy-five percent of vegetation established and you can submit to have it renewed.
Just like our last bridge, Coben Bridge, I submitted two months ago for it to be released and I haven't heard from them, so. I need to reach out to them and try to get that taken care of because it takes up quite a bit of time. I do have an idea to run by you all on the landfill backhoe. I know you sent an email to me there last week, I think it was, on potentially looking at a used backhoe for replacement of the landfill's backhoe. And I would like to explore the option of selling the highway department's backhoe to them because it's a known quantity. We know.
Selling the highway department's backhoe to the landfill?
Yeah, because we have two of them. Sell our, the older one to the landfill.
Do we have more than two? Aren't there three?
Uh, we have one that's supposed to go.
One of the landfill and three for the highway department?
The one, there's one at the highway department that's scheduled to be sold with Purple Wave when we did a replacement this last year.
Okay.
But, you know, I, I think that we'd be better utilized if we would find a way that we could sell that backhoe to the landfill if they're wanting to go used, which is fine. That way, the highway department could look at a tract excavator for bridge projects. I know on Bridge one oh five, we kind of maxed our abilities to set those beams ourself, you know, and I'm not going to say it was done in an unsafe manner, but it wasn't as safe as it could have been. You know, it's, uh, I believe it's something that we could utilize and I'm still exploring options on being able to drive our own piling.
What do you think the, which one are you proposing to sell?
Our, the older one.
What's it?
Uh, what is it? Two thousand nine, three-ten S J John Deere.
Okay, so a two thousand nine John Deere?
Yeah.
And what are you proposing the value is?
You know, just off the top of my head, I'm thinking around forty-five. Good morning.
You wouldn't want to be in my office right now. The walls would be shaking.
You know, it's an option. Now, I've, I don't want to go into a lot of details on what I've been discussing with some engineers on driving our own piling. It's still in a, a working phase here yet. You know, I, I think if we could ever get to the point where we can drive our own piling, we'll be able to save a lot of money and be able to expediently build a lot more bridges. You know, I think that that's something that we need to look at very closely. But having an excavator is a key piece, key, key component in making that happen. So, but if that's not something you guys are willing to let us explore, you know, I can start doing some looking for a used backhoe, I guess, for the landfill or whatever you want me to do.
So the reason why I was proposing to look at something used for up there is because my understanding of it, limited as it may be, is that it's only used to push garbage. I mean, it's not really performing any heavy laborious type work as far as excavation or anything like that.
Not much.
Right. So I don't, you know, in my opinion, that a used one should serve the purpose for quite a while, especially if it's in better shape than the one that they have now. What do you think needs to happen to the one that's there now?
I'd sell it on Purple Wave.
What would it be worth?
Auction's a crazy thing, but you know, I think if you got anywhere from five to ten maybe, I, it just depends. Auctions can do crazy things, but.
Does it still operate okay?
Oh, yeah.
You had, there was an issue with it here, wasn't there, a while back?
There's many issues with it. You know, the front end, most of the pivot joints in the front loader bucket and the rear loader bucket, the main swing pin, several cylinders on it are getting to the point where they need rebuild.
It's operational, but it's, it's needed work done, probably.
What did the maintenance records look like on that piece of equipment? Has it been thoroughly?
It gets serviced.
Done or?
I believe, you know, as far as those go, I don't know if there's been a whole lot done.
Is the landfill service, doing all the service itself or are they?
They will bring it, they will bring it into the highway department for service. I know they have outsourced several.
How do you charge that? I haven't noticed particularly.
I don't know if much that is charged.
It's a charge between landfill and highway.
It used to. What's being done now, but nobody comes in with a bill from the highway department or with the fuel.
I'm gonna have to check with Liz on that and see if that's being done.
Is the personnel there just not capable of doing its own maintenance on some?
Well, a lot of the maintenance, yes, they should be able to do a lot of that, you know.
Servicing maintenance as well.
Greasing and stuff, but as far as changing the oil and filters and stuff like that, we, several years ago, went to where we tried to do, or actually, we do do all of the services we do in our shop in a controlled environment. And that way, it's, uh, the paperwork gets kept up, the service sheet gets done, it gets entered into the computer, you know, so there's electronic log of it and everything.
So then do they keep a separate maintenance record at the landfill?
I do not believe they do. They just keep, keep track of their hours, you know, kind of like you would on your vehicle when it's due for a service.
So what kind of investment are you talking about if you were to get a tract backhoe?
Oh, boy. I looked at some numbers, it's been several years ago and I can't remember what it was going to be. They're not cheap. It was going to be about two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand if you went new.
Is that something that we're presently able to utilize or is that more for once you aim toward doing your piling?
No, we could utilize it on almost all of our bridge projects, you know, uh, just like.
Three or four pretty good size ones that we're gonna make a difference in.
We got a couple locations, three locations in the plans where we're actually going to be eliminating bridges that are below, uh, some watershed structures that have been built since the bridges were built. Be very handy there. We looked at, uh, the bridge on Union this morning even where we need to do a lot of excavation, channel realignment, and cleaning out the barrel on the Ash Grove Arch Bridge. You know, if, if we take a backhoe in there and try to do that, it's, it would take more time than it's worth, you know, it's just going to set us further and further back to getting progress.
So could you gather us maybe some numbers on new and anything decently used that would be a good, good proposal for us or?
I can look into it, yeah.
So we can have some comparative numbers.
So this track backhoe would be very effective in those areas you just talked about where you can't use a regular backhoe.
Yeah, you know.
And over time, this would, with these bridge building, hopefully save us money, enough money to pay for that.
Over time, I believe.
Two to three hundred thousand dollars.
Over time.
Over time, and that would take about five years.
You know, and.
Well, what did we just pay out, or we approved to pay out for the?
It was over ten thousand dollars just to drive ten sticks of steel in the ground. You know.
So if we had this device or it would, we could do it and save that ten thousand dollars and do that multiple times.
Well, there would be an additional piece of equipment that would attach onto the excavator, a vibratory driver. You know, I, I can't say that this is a hundred percent going to be a go, but I know Ottawa County has one and I'd like to potentially borrow theirs or rent it from them, do a trial run.
What's it called?
What's?
What is it called?
Power driver.
Vibratory power driver.
Okay.
So typically, they drive piles with a hammer, so you put an handle on the top of it and you've got a, pretty much a hammer that hits that top.
Two to three thousand pound weight, basically.
And then based off how far that bounces up and then how far it goes in after ten blows, we can kind of estimate the bearing. With this, we'd use this vibratory one, so he'd come out and he'd vibrate and put some of these piles in, and then there's a PDA, a pile of driving assist that you can hook onto it and tell you if you hit bearing. Typically, we'd do like fifty tons of bearing or sixty tons if it's a bigger bridge and that's pretty much your weight of your structure and then your live load impact when a structure goes over it. So if, you know, if Michael could use his equipment and drive these piles and we know they're hitting fifty tons, then yeah, then the county could do it themselves. And then I'd, I guess I'd be okay signing off on that stuff.
You know, it, it's going to take some work getting there. You know, to be able to verify it and some cost, you know, it's not cheap to, we'd have to rent a crane and a PDA and engineering firm. You know, all to verify and analyze it.
But overall, this would save us money compared to what we're doing now?
Oh, yeah.
Right now, we're basically having to sub out.
Sub out all this stuff, right? And, and they're doing it, we're paying them, and then that costs a lot of money. And you could maybe, a new one's like two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand. Could you get a good used one for half that, you think, or something like that?
A good used one, I don't think it'd go half. Excavators tend to hold their value if they're worth anything. Even, even a worn out one is going to bring some money.
So hundred, hundred, hundred fifty, two hundred, somewhere. It's hard to say.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, I know, they're all different, yeah.
You know, I haven't invested any time researching it for several years now, so.
Okay.
Those numbers could be off. And that's all I have. Do you have an update, Bob, before we get into bridge details?
Here, we have a whole rock because of the weather conditions, it's been trying to stay ahead of the weather and keep the roads cleaned off and trying to keep them passable. Was going to do a little work today, was hauling all the rock and fixing places, but the way it turned out, that kind of put a stop to that operation for today, so. Hopefully, we'll try tomorrow, hopefully it's going to blow through and we can get to work on some of these roads. Needs some rock on them.
So you're not hauling anything today, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So what are they doing instead?
Well, like I said, we've got a truck out spreading salt and sand on the roads and the boys are working in the shop fixing some sign racks and some of the other boys are out checking where that old road and the pipe out here by Myers and the boys are out looking at that and they're going to kind of haul it on tomorrow and that's, hopefully it's way that blows through before they dig the road all up and work on that.
Do you ever go out to the outline shops, like just for the graders or whatever they have for mowing tractors and whatnot? Do you ever do like cleaning inspection, like are they supposed to be cleaning them on days when they're not out working or do you look at those and make notes or?
Yeah, I try to do that. I've had, they've been out doing some of that here this last week and stuff on some of those. Like I said, that's kind of what they're doing, they're fixing some racks to put their signs and stuff in so they can kind of straighten it and pick up a little. I want to try to monitor it a little better than what it has been here, but.
Well, I was kind of just wondering, since we've replaced a lot of these motor graders, if they're being cleaned, you know, I mean, they're expensive pieces of equipment, it's better to keep them.
Yeah.
As clean as possible.
And I tried to emphasize that earlier there about doing evaluations, some of this kind of maintenance and stuff was going to reflect back on the kind of evaluation I did on them, so, so they need to make sure they're keeping their stuff maintained and cleaned up and stuff.
Well, I know how much mud I've picked up in the last two weeks, though.
Yeah.
Also, I have a question about, one, some of the grader drivers. Do, do we have training for like a new, when you hire someone new, like to, to training to run a grader and how to like, you know, crown on the top of gravel roads and stuff like that? And I'm not criticizing here, it's just a question of, because it's complicated and we've got a lot of different materials, I know, you know, from clay to gravel to dirt and, you know, and, and I just went and attended this commissioner training this last week and there are, that was an issue on a lot of counties with the road, gravel roads, obviously out of the country. And they have a training, they offer training like down in classes for like a day or two for potential new people, just to, you know, help them train, and I'm not criticizing here or nothing, but I just want to, if we can help our operators do better to keep our customers out of the country or taxpayers happy, maybe that would be something to think about. I don't know. Do you have any training now for guys?
They've been, all of our operators have been to that training that you're talking about.
Oh, okay, good, good.
That's through LTAP.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, uh, it's not great training.
Okay.
If you know what I mean. I mean, they, there's some good tips in there and everything and they'll come out, work on one of our roads and just like the last time we did it, the, the trainer, the guy that was putting on the class, he is telling the guys how they need to do it and what needs to be done and the guys weren't able to get it done. He goes, well, just watch me do it and then, you know, he couldn't even make it do it because there's different soil types and stuff like that. You know, it, it's not great training, you know, that, that's why last year, you know, I, I really think that the county could benefit if we had somebody, that could be a working foreman that had the time to go out and train these guys and spend days upon days upon days with somebody to help train them up and work on some of their deficiencies. But, you know, for in-house, we don't have the, the manpower to take somebody off their route for two, three weeks at a time to work with these guys, you know. To be honest, a lot of it, the training is trial and error on some of it. You know, you visit with them and tell them that this needs to be done differently. To be honest, a lot of it, the training is trial and error on some of it, you know, you visit with them and tell them that this needs to be done differently, that needs to be done differently and, you know, but we just don't have the manpower to have somebody with them, the length of time that I would like see happen.
Yeah, cause you know, we, you know, you've, that's what you hear a lot, the farmers.
It is, yes.
And the people in the country complaining about their roads, you know, I hear it now and I've only been in here a week, you know. So, you know, and I, I know that's difficult, that's probably your toughest job, because you've got five hundred, six hundred miles.
Eleven hundred.
Yeah, eleven hundred between dirt and gravel, and, you know, and I, everybody wants their roads fixed right now. So, but I was just thinking if we could, and I know you got commissioners probably talking about this forever, but, if we could get them trained and everybody happier, we're all doing better, you know.
We would.
Yeah.
You know, in the long run, we would be so much cheaper paying one more additional employee than we are the way we're doing it now.
Yeah, well, that's our concern and all of, I'm sure it's heard this and I'm sure Alexis, to buy our, at farmers primarily because they use most of these country roads, about them complaining about that. And uh, if we could somehow make that better, it should be good. And I know it's not simple, cause you got a lot of the roads and you got these weather conditions now, it's terrible, I know.
You know, it, it, it all comes down to one thing. Everybody wants more with less, but when you've been doing, that for so many years, there's no more less to give, you know what I'm saying? You know, the, at one time when roads were real good in the county, there was forty-five employees or more, maybe.
Forty employees we had back then.
You know, now we're down to twenty-six, you know, and that includes all the administrative staff and everything, and mechanics, so. You know, it, there's definitely gonna be a change, yeah, we got some little bit nicer equipment, but at the end of the day, a motor grader from the seventies versus a motor grader today, the amount of work you can do in one day hasn't changed a lot.
Yeah.
I mean, some it has, you know, granted articulation technology and some of that helps a lot, but, you know, it's, it's slow.
I've tried to work with some of the guys, much as I can, go out and work with them and try to show them different things and ways. But I get tied up with paperwork and stuff too and don't get out and, out checking roads and bridges and stuff and don't have the time to do it like I'd like to, you know, say. So.
And also, do you guys like have a schedule of what roads you do primarily, like after a big storm, do you try to do the bus route, major roads first and the mail routes first?
Bus and mail.
And because they're the primary routes, obviously, and it's, so you got procedures to what you're doing and all of that?
You know, a, a typical snow, we can usually get at least one path in and out to everybody. You know, this last snow we had, that didn't work so well, we had to slow way down, the ground was thawed underneath, you just weren't able to travel as fast as we normally would. You know, it, it presented a lot of problems, you know, but.
Right.
You know, we came in, worked as long as we could on those Saturdays and Sundays until we got everybody open, so.
No, yeah, you got a very difficult job in this weather. And sometime I'd like to just come and have you show me around your facilities and what you're doing, you know, just to, cause I'm new at this and, and meet with more of us all you guys, just to see your day-to-day activities, you know, and try to understand your operation better, okay?
Sounds great.
If you could give me your number sometime, Michael or Bob, I'll, I'll come by when you guys, I know you're busy, but if we could, meet or just ride around with you or something. Okay? Thanks.
Lot of problems, yeah.
Well, Alexis is gone, so I don't know what we're gonna do. Oh, there you are. Okay, you're hiding, man.
Yeah, I want to go on Tanner, I guess. You know, I, I wanna make one more mention. We're really looking at some options to try getting some road material that we can use. You know, our, our native gravel that is wet, you know, when it's thawed out, we can't even get in and out of these pits, you know, there's no way to even get there, so. I'm seeking some different options, you know, whether it's quartzite, uh, Chapman, um, looking into potentially some asphalt millings. You know, we gotta come up with something here that we can find, the cheapest that we can use is gonna give us the best product.
Well, I was wanting to talk to you guys about that too, now that you brought it up, but that, I was a substitute mail carrier whenever I designed that, you know, that was, and you know, we've had a lot of this clay material in the gravel, especially southeast side of the county, and I know that's what you had to work with, but it's, terrible in this type of weather cause it's so greasy and slick, and, and it's dangerous. And so, and I, and I talked to other people, I was at this uh, meeting last week, and a lot of them use like a sand type stuff, to blend, and at, at least to blend with this clay type stuff, maybe to harden it up, because right now, once it hardens up and once it rains again, six months from now, it'll turn right back to greasy, slimy clay. And I don't, some people use sand in hauling, and I, we got a quartzite here, it's got, I know, I've talked to Terry Finch about this, farmer screenings, maybe doesn't work, cause it could, once it gets dusty in a blow, and I've heard that, maybe create washboardy type problems. But if, could we, I don't know, could we try maybe to blend some of that with this clay stuff to at least stabilize it maybe, and I don't, I'm not a.
Yeah, we've been doing some of that. They have a product that's called One Inch Roadstone and we bought quite a few tons of it this last year.
And they have farmer screenings and stuff, and a lot of farmers put that in their yard, and it hardens up good. Now, I know it's not on the highway where it'll probably crack up worse and get a lot more, a lot more stress with a lot more traffic, but.
If you blend it.
But I was wondering, like the farmer screenings or sand at quartzite, it'd be cheaper, you'd think it'd be pretty reasonably priced.
I'm trying to think what the price was on that, I think the farmer screening might even been higher than the roadstone, I can't remember. But it, it, it's got everything from one inch down to grizzly, you know, it's, it's got a.
Yeah, I know.
Lot of different gradients in there.
Well, I'm just saying, but that clay stuff, and then I'm again blaming you guys, cause this is what you had to deal with, but that's some dangerous stuff, and if, if we could put something in there to bind that up, to harden that up, sand, something, and I, and I know quartzite rock, is very expensive if you get the really good stuff, so I know, yeah.
Pure rock is.
Six seventy-five, six seventy-five a ton is what it is.
For what?
For the farmer's screen.
Yeah. And if you get, I've heard the good, good quartzite rocks like twenty-seven dollars a ton.
Oh, if you get clean rock, yeah, you're looking at twenty-seven, twenty-eight dollars a ton.
Yeah, that's too expensive.
You just can't do that.
But I, I know you, you guys that are gravel pits, I've heard are uh, running out of good quality gravel, and, what do you do, and I know, but this clay stuff is dangerous because I was mail carrier and you're going, you'll, first you go along on some decent gravel road and then you hit a patch where you guys put some of that on and man, it turns to slime and, if you're not careful, you could wreck or put in a ditch real easy. So, I don't know, I was just, and I've heard a lot of complaints about that, and I know you have probably too, but.
Oh yeah.
If we could put something, like if we could try some of this sand stuff at least to blend with.
Oh, we've tried it in numerous spots and it works pretty darn good.
Yeah, well, maybe we ought to do more of that, huh?
Yes, I would love to, but it will take a lot more money than what we've had for it.
Okay.
You know, and I guess if we gotta short something else, we're gonna have to short something else, cause I can guarantee you this year, with the conditions that we currently have and what the forecast and what could even come to us, we're gonna be spending a lot on, a different type of material from a quarry or something like that. I don't think we'll have any option not to.
I have a question, you had said earlier that you have these different types of material that you've purchased in the past. So what is your method by which you're mixing any to, given different gradients of stone or sand or?
Usually string it out on the road, a certain amount on the road, and then we kinda windrow it with, the other material, we don't tear all the material out, but some, and mix the two together and try to lay them out.
So you're just mixing whatever you're applying with what's already underneath?
Yeah.
I'm talking about a mixture that you might produce before you apply it, as in, if he was saying that you were adding some sand, say you had a pit that you knew was pretty full of clay, but you were getting the last of the gravel out. You've never tried to create a pile by hauling in sand there before it's actually applied to the road?
Yeah, cause it's pretty hard to do, yeah, you can, you're gonna spend a lot of time transporting something in there and mixing it and loading it up and hauling it back out. Your expenses are gonna go up, and a lot of times, you're not sure. The material out of the gravel pits can vary from this end of the table to that end of the table when you're piling it, so it's hard to, determine whether, do we need to mix something with this or do we need to, is this gonna be okay on the road? That's what happens, a lot of times some of these places on the road are clay slicking, they get in this, spot in there or in the pile or something and it comes out, so that's usually what we use, is put it on the road and, do one spot here and the rest of the road will be fine, so, it's uh, you know.
So there's a few people that I've spoken with who were around prior to thirty years ago, and I know you were too. Um, but, and I brought this up before, they said that we had a screen sifter on site, so that you could actually sift out some of the bigger rock material, then you know you're putting that down on the base. And then you can use some of the screenings that have made it through to mix with, let's say, your roadstone or something that you buy, and you mix that before you apply it. Now, I understand if you get a screening, mechanism on site, that then you have to qualify, what did we talk about? You have to qualify as.
I'm sure.
Okay, so that may not be a procedure that we can do now, that they've done forty years ago. But as far as just putting the material on the road and then expecting a mix to occur, I mean, I traveled the dump road here after that snow, and whoever pushed the snow off that road also dug up two inches of gravel and, or topping, let's call it, because it wasn't straight gravel. And that was in the windrow on top of the snow. And so now, whatever was mixed or applied as that top coat has already been lifted. And so I think we're getting that in a lot of different places, and I'm no operator, so I know it's easy to go too deep or not deep enough. But I've even had a call about the Westfall Road that you guys just recently did, because what, what you put on top was a nice layer, until it started rolling off onto the sides. So if we're not actually rolling it in, or mixing it with something that's going to congeal, then we're losing that material off into the ditch eventually, by way of traffic or wind or erosion.
Yeah, you're gonna lose a certain amount of that no matter what, because of.
But you just did that a couple of weeks ago, so that's not, I'm not saying like it's been years, it's been literally a month. We can't afford that.
You know, it's uh, hard to say this time, and that's why I told the guys when I played. This is a different experience for most of these guys. We only have a couple of operators that's been experienced with this kind of snow that we had. Rain, you had a muddy road underneath and then wet snow on it, where you're trying to blade that and you hit soft spots, you're in, you're out. Yeah, and it's hard to control not taking some of the material off, either that or you're gonna leave a bunch of snow one way or the other, so. They have to learn to really concentrate on what they're doing with that kind of, conditions that we had on this last snow. It's not like if it's roads froze and we get a snow, you can go out there, no problem, but when it's muddy like that, it's hard to control what's happening.
So back to the training comment that Randy made, are there not opportunities, you said that, that particular training was given by?
LTAP.
What's that stand for?
Local Area Technical.
Something.
So aren't there available, aren't there um, training sessions by KDOT that are hirable, where they could come out and, or, or provide even?
KDOT doesn't deal with gravel roads, it's all asphalt that they do, does ever offer.
Just that LTAP is what I know of. And then there's the, the manual on how to perform the maintenance on the gravel roads, so. The county's referenced that, but.
Cause I can say that's what the instructor found out here, they, he was gonna show us how to do it, though. Oh, this material works altogether different where I'm from, so.
That's like.
Every area has to learn their own.
Yeah, your dirt roads are different than your gravel, and then how wet, how dry, yeah, they got a tough job because of all these.
Sand, these materials, those clay.
I know, and rocks up these hills, yeah, I know, it's difficult though. They try to do that, and I don't, they try to do the best they can. It's just, I'm sure you, you know, you guys hear it from everybody out, the farmers that are complaining. And uh, that's just the way it is, you know.
Yeah, try to do the best we can with what we got to work with, you know, it's.
Sure. Yeah, so I've got, um, I've got three thing, three things, um, I've got the vinyl brick inspection report for you guys. Um, I've got a stone masonry arch map that you wanted, I promised you I'd get you that, so I got that. And then I have one twentieth road south of Vesper, some analysis we did on that. Um, is there any particular thing you guys wanna do? You wanna do one twentieth thing of the bridges?
Yeah, let's start with the road, and how far down did you go? Did you go from eighteen south?
So, we looked at south of Kiowa Drive.
Where, after the blacktop?
Right here. So I think a gentleman had, and when we, it was what, it was last month we went and looked at it, gentleman had, came off the, edge of the road, um, and, and went down and looks like he wrecked his vehicle down, went through the fence. Um, so Michael asked if I could kinda look at possibly what we could do to fix, um, the, the near vertical, four slopes, I guess, on the shoulder. Um, so typically, um, when we design something, we do like a three to one, so a three foot horizontal for one foot vertical. Um, so I would taper it down, and if someone puts a wheel on the side, they can recover. Um, so typically that's in some design guidelines. Um, so these are pretty much like a point five to one or point two, so these are pretty, pretty steep. Um, so we went and drove this and we identified, um, seven different areas, so.
Did you go clear to the south border of the county?
Um, we went, how far did you go?
We went all the way to county line.
Yeah.
Cause we looked at the other projects we've done previously.
Right.
Down at the south.
Right. So we identified about seven of those areas where, you know.
I think they fall within what, three miles there?
Yeah. Yeah, so about three miles. So we looked at some different options, um, and I'll touch base on each of these options. We looked at some signage, um, guardrail, and then doing actual dirt project and finding some fill material, um, sloping it to three to one, um, and having a contractor do it, and we also looked at maybe the county could do it. So, for the signs, um, that's probably the most cheapest option. I found a couple of signs that you could kinda put up. And they're in the MUTCD, so there are shoulder signs and plaques, so they're W eight dash seventeen and a W eight dash seventeen P. And so there would be a, you can see here, so pretty much a shoulder drop-off sign. So you could, that would be probably the cheapest thing you could go, you could put up, so you know, the tri- and public, easy signs. They know there's a shoulder drop-off, so they'll try to stay away from that shoulder. The next option would be guardrail. I looked back at some contractor prices and guardrails run on about a hundred and ten dollars per linear foot, um, that's if you hired a contractor to do it. And then each of the end sections, um, so if you put up guardrail, each of them has, have to have an approved end section, crash worthy. And they're about three thousand dollars apiece.
Just the end?
Yep, just the end terminal, that would be there, so it's crashed, it's tested, um, with crash data. Um, I know some of the fishtail ones, um, they're not really, they, they kinda stay with the vehicle, these, you know, get away from the vehicle and so they don't cause any, any damage to the, the people riding in it. Um, so you're looking at, okay, so we looked at, I did prices for one and two together, and I did prices if you did all seven.
That's on just the guardrail this time, right?
Yeah, so one and two, just the guardrail, um, you're looking at about twenty-eight hundred linear feet of it, um, so about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars of guardrail.
Just fix two sides?
That would be just two sides on option one, or area one and area two. So then I also looked at if we hired a contractor to come in and, um, potentially, pull some fill material, come in, reshape the four slopes to get them to that three to one. Um, we'd have to remove and probably get some temporary easements and put the fence back. Um, I looked at costs for that.
Extend the drainage structures.
Right, right, yep, so we.
And or replays.
And traffic control, staking, erosion control, seeding, clearing and grubbing. Um, so adding all that together for option, or for area one and two, I got about five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So there is a lot of fill and material that.
When you say one and two, you're not going south of that point.
No.
Yeah.
Just the, within the first mile, the first two locations, which are the worst two locations.
Right, yeah.
And give me an idea of, I mean, I've been on that road plenty of times, but I don't know exactly where you are, so you're saying a section, in between those sections is a three to one slope ratio?
Um, these pretty much tie in together, um, I think it does.
So you're talking about that whole stretch?
Yeah, it's pretty much. Yeah, it's pretty much the whole stretch. So from Kiowa, Kiowa Drive fourteen hundred feet south of.
That whole stretch?
Yeah.
And you're talking about subcontracting a job to reshape the slopes to three to one for that stretch for five hundred and twenty five thousand?
Yes, approximately. Would be a contractor price.
So would you say there's five, how many cubic yards?
About, so contractor furnace, they need to bring in a little less than forty thousand cubic yards to get that to a three to one slope.
What is it now? Do you just estimate?
What is the slope now?
Yeah.
Oh, it, it kind of varies. It's, some areas it is probably a point two to one or point five to one. So it is pretty.
Pretty vertical.
It is pretty good vertical. So, yeah, so five hundred.
Are we assuming that that has just been like that since the construction of the road?
That's the way it was.
Yeah.
There's, there's getting to be some deterioration over time and it's starting to get worse, yes. You know, it was designed, that whole stretch of road from eighteen all the way down to seventy was that way. You know, it's changing times, you know, it was probably designed as a ten foot road when it was originally done, twenty. You know, it's.
What, what width are we on that road?
It's getting close to what, twenty six?
It's a little wider there than most places, so twenty six, twenty eight.
So I mean, do we have the option of narrowing the road a little and using some of that material so that we're not just hauling? I mean, can we kind of restrict the?
We would still have to haul that much even if we narrowed. To be able to get your three to one, it would still be about the same amount of material. I don't think it would vary if you narrowed the road up by much, if any.
What, what are we on a standard double passing road like that? I mean, if twenty eight, twenty six is wide, what's?
Twenty four is what we shoot for now.
So you, okay.
Some will be narrower, some will be a little bit wider.
Of ability to narrow it.
Potentially.
Now, you're looking at what? No, not very many cubic yards.
Right, right.
Being that that road is wide all the way through there being a FAS route, I believe the public will do some complaining for narrow stretches too. But you know, that, that whole road over time has widened out some. It could be narrowed up, but you know, it's a systemic project to do. It's not like we'd go in there and go from one end to the other narrowing it up, pulling ditches and everything.
So that's another thing we, we talked about, cause you're aware of the Hydras Road Program and we've applied for minor collector signs. So we were talking and Michael was like, well, could we applying to this program and maybe get funding? And, and you know, if you get selected, KDOT would pay for eighty percent of the construction and then all the inspection. And then the county would have to pay for the design and the survey and any temporary right of way or anything like that. So we looked at it, I called KDOT on it. They like systemic projects, so systemic being throughout the whole county. That's why the signs are a big popular deal with them. So this would be a non-systemic, so like a corridor project. And you would need additional accident data.
Crash data.
Crash data. So if anyone's, you know, wrecked, if this gentleman filled a police report out, anything like that, we could, we could talk to KDOT and maybe the sheriff and maybe get some of that data at this location.
So this question is more for them than you, but where else are we having this similar issue, just going off the systemic idea? I mean, where else do we have a majorly traveled road that has that kind of a? An issue, the same, the same concept there that we're dealing with, like needing to reshape, not just the shoulders, but the ditch.
We fixed a few over the years on the Barnard Beverly Road and then we did one down on Apache after some flooding when it finally sloughed away on us. Boy, I'm trying to think of anything off the top of my head, I'm, nothing's jumping out at me on that.
And obviously not our back, less traveled roads, but just more of the main throughway. I mean, I know we have a few big ditches there just west of the school in Sylvan, as soon as that turns to dirt, I mean, it's not many, but a few.
So you're thinking about systemically, we have these issues of these locations and applying to that, okay. So then.
Be a big project.
So I talked to, I talked to Bill Leggy, he's, you know, in charge of the Hydras Road. And so I asked him, I was like, what if we apply with this project and also our minor collector signs? And he says, don't do it. Cause if you apply for two, you lose a point. He said the minor collector signs is actually sitting really high, so we foresee that getting selected. I mean, you apply for this, you're gonna bring it down a point and you're gonna hurt the chances of getting selected there. You remember the local road safety plan that we signed up for? He said the best chance would, when, when KDOT comes out and does that local road safety plan, to tell them about these issues along these major collectors, so we could give them these maps. And then they'll evaluate these even closer and then identify it as a potential project in the local road safety plan. And then you could use all the data that they put in the plan and then apply and potentially get selected. But that would be years down the road. That's gonna be three, four years.
I'm just gonna say, I mean, we don't have the finances to invest in something like that, nor do we have the time and manpower to take it on ourselves. I think more of the issue, I understand what you're saying about the slope. I mean, it'd be nice to have that correct ratio. But I think more of the issue is number one, if we don't have a crown on the roads, then we're just creating, in essence, for lack of a better term, big potholes. And that's where you get the slush, that's where you start fishtailing. That creates the danger of sliding off the road that you'd even worry about the ratio and slope of the ditch. So if we can't get some uniform expectation for maintaining the road surface, then something like this is kind of a waste of time and money. I mean, if, if we're gonna, if we reshape any of those areas, hauling in dirt, even, I mean, I guess the guardrails would be the only permanent solution, whether you're riding in slush or not, but you know, if we're going back to the fact that the roads are being maintained in such a way that the dip is creating a moisture pool and the windrows and the curbs that, where the grass is growing and rooting in six inches above the road base, you know, if we don't get rid of that, then none of this helps, the actual condition of the road. So you know, that goes back to some training and expectations on part of the routekeepers.
Part of, I'll give a little bit of back history on this particular location though. I do believe the road has crown there and there are curbs there. And those curbs have been left there as a safety hub guard, I wanna say. Is if somebody does slide off, it's something to potentially keep them from going all the way directly off the edge. They'll bump that and either get out on their own or they'll call somebody to pull them out.
But that's a catch twenty-two, I mean.
It is. It is catch twenty-two. But you know, that, for what we have to spend money on that, that was the safest way to prevent somebody from going off the roadway. But I agree, something needs to be done. You know, we need to add some fill in there no matter what. Even if we go with another plan, we're gonna have to put something in here at some point, you know, and we're gonna have to work with the landowners on that. We'll probably have to remove some fence and you know, it's, even just doing some repairs, it's gonna turn into a big project, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
You know, but we, we, we need to do something there.
And I don't know if you were here about to see the pictures, but originally this was brought to our attention because there are some culverts, well, you maybe even saw some in person, but the deterioration that's happening, happening around the end of the culvert and the hole and the, the.
Scavenged.
Yeah, what has been created there, I think can be addressed as an individual issue. Not, you know, necessarily that you have to reshape an entire four miles of road to, to at least immediately address some of the danger there. I mean, there was basically a hole there. I think you guys just put up a.
Yeah.
Notification stick, whatever you call that. So those kinds of things, I mean, who's taking care of that? Are you expecting the maintainer to take care of that? Why didn't the maintainer turn that into you and let you know that it needed addressed? And if you did get that notification or if you've already had it, who was supposed to go out and actually address that physically?
Blade man, they're supposed to kind of maintain those type deals, kind of watch those and take care of them as they maintain their roads, keep them.
So how long are we going to allow something like that to maintain, to, to be an issue, to remain an issue, before that becomes a problem with the person who's responsible for it? Do you see what I'm saying?
Keep working with them, trying to explain to them. Like I said, this is something goes back and need to train them a little better. Try, I treat, trying to tell them you need to do this, get some crown in, cut these off and stuff. But a lot of them just go on and continue doing what they're doing. And the weather conditions the last year hasn't helped any, all the rains and stuff, it's, it's been a problem for them to try to keep up on some of that stuff. Keep working with them, hoping and trying to train them to cut those curbs off and get crown in and stuff more. We had a meeting the other day and went over some stuff and I wanna, gotta know a whole list I wanna go over all the blade guys with about stuff like that again and try to get it instilled in them. They need to do more attention, not just, you know, going from one side to the other.
Right, which we have a lot of. Well, I appreciate you at least putting the numbers together, cause it gives us perspective of what that kind of a project means in outright cost and that is just not within our reachable goals, so.
Okay, I'll leave these with Michael.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, got a little time left. So I've got the vinyl bridge inspection reports and a couple of maps. One map for you guys, sometimes the counties like to hang them up. I'm just showing the location of each of the, each of the bridges and one for you. And I've got seven copies, so you'll get one of these. So how much time do we have? Do, do you want me to just kind of hit on the hard data and kind of explain it? Or do you wanna go through page for page for this thing?
Well, we're a little pressed for time.
Okay.
I think maybe you could give us an overview of what we need to be looking for.
Okay, okay. So KDOT requires that you do a vinyl bridge inspections on any structure with a span length, so inside of the buttment, inside buttment over twenty foot. So this report has all your bridges in it. Data that we took when we, when our inspector, Dennis Weaver, he's our certified bridge inspector, when he was inspecting them. It's got all that data in it. So the first, like part one just goes and kind of describes why we're doing this. Talks about the naming system, goes into, talks about bridge length, year built, talks about the sufficiency rating, and then classification of the deficient bridges and all that stuff. And then it goes into like the rating guidelines. So those are the guidelines that we use.
Still, I'm sorry to interrupt, does this still include the closed bridges?
Closed bridges, if they've been removed, this is everything that's still on KDOT's inventory.
Has a bridge number.
That has a bridge number. So if it's been closed and then removed from the bridge inventory, then it wouldn't be included in this at all.
So for example, Michael, like the one just south of sixty-five that goes over Wolf Creek there that has been closed? Cause I think it's sixty-nine here. Is that a permanent closing or how does that?
I believe that has been.
Removed?
I'm pretty sure it has.
If we can look at that.
That's all right, we don't need to spend a lot of time. I just wanted to know what, if I look one up.
Sixty-nine is on here, yeah.
So who deems it officially, that's what I'm saying, like if we know that it needs too much repair, that we can't afford it, et cetera, we put closed signs. But when does it become closed to something like this versus closed because we haven't gotten around to it yet?
I believe that's always went through the commission, I believe.
Okay.
You know, it was discussed and decided upon at that point, you know, if, if, if you don't see that we're gonna have funding or time to replace a bridge within the near future, you know, why spend money on the inspections and stuff like that?
I understand that, okay.
Yep, and then there'd just be some pictures with closed signs and then you'd send those to us and we'd send a request to KDOT and then we'd get it off the inventory. So let's just jump back to, let's go to the tabs, the bridge number tab. Just jump right into the, the heart of the data here. So these are all your bridges. The first couple of sheets are all the bridges sorted by the LPA bridge number. So you can see RS ten, RS twenty, those are sorted by the bridge number. And so it's got the bridge number, the fully carried, the feature intersected, the structural description or like what type of bridge it is, the length, the year built, ADT or average daily traffic, the sufficiency rating, there's a calculation that you use, all the ratings that we give it, that figures into ADT and all that stuff that comes up with their sufficiency rating. And then the classification of the bridge. So we sorted it by bridge, LPA bridge number for the FAS routes. And if you go two pages back, there's the off system bridges. So these are on the, the routes that probably have a smaller ADT and then they're sorted by bridge number also. And the next tab, the sufficiency rating. So we went through and sorted the FAS and also the off system bridges by your sufficiency rating. Leads to greatest. So the sufficiency rating sometimes, or it usually does kind of give you an idea of which structure has issues, which ones are kind of the, you know, maybe in need of some repair, that kind of stuff. So that's for you guys. If there's any other ways you wanna see the bridges sorted, just call me or tell Michael to ask me or something, I, I would be willing to, to give that to you. And so on and so forth.
We can pull this up again and if you'd like to just explain to us what you've done with the.
Yeah. Yeah. So if there's any questions on that, just let me know. So for the stone arch bridges, so I pretty much took our bridge inspection map. We sorted all the bridges by masonry arch being the type and then we pulled out all the ones that weren't the masonry. So we came up with this map. I know, I think you had mentioned that you maybe wanna do a project. So this could help identify where some of these structures are. And also in this report, there's a maintenance.
So this would only be arch if this isn't necessarily ones that have piers that are masonry piers, correct? Is that what that means?
If they've got a pier and they meet the twenty foot from buttment to buttment, they would be included in this.
Regardless of what the, the surface structure is for the traveling.
Is it, it had vertical walls versus an arch? Did it make this or is this just strictly arch?
This is masonry arch, yeah. So if there are some masonry's.
Do you see what I'm saying, like?
If there's masonry and they're vertical, they don't have the arch.
Right.
Um, do you have some like that?
Well, the one that we've talked about over here, sixty-five, the last one, the west end, it actually, and I looked at it myself.
So that one wouldn't be, cause the, the substructure is masonry, the super, this is for the superstructure. So the actual supporting part would be a masonry arch. That's got substructure that's, yeah, so that.
And this is only things over twenty feet?
Yeah, so this is a, a bridge size.
Okay. So then you guys may want to additionally look at some areas where they're smaller, not qualifying as a bridge, but a culvert that may also need that same type of repair.
Yeah, a lot of those locations, at the end of the day, you probably be cheaper off to replace them instead of. Smaller structures.
How do we know that until we get a bid to look at them?
I guess we can base it off of prior bids. That is, the road width or bridge width.
Too narrow, you're structurally obsolete.
Carrying equipment and stuff across. One thing it would be looking at, because if it's got some railings on it and it's only sixteen foot wide and you can't get equipment, so it better to replace it or repair it.
Culverts in and make it wide enough that's usable.
Culverts would probably be cheaper than repairing the bridge, right? Putting in culverts, new ones, wear wear.
In, in many locations, yes. You know, and just like Bob said, if the arch is wide enough that it's gonna carry, you know, twenty-four foot wide equipment, you know, then it might be worth looking into potentially doing a tuck point. But you know, if you're a sixteen foot roadway, you know, my end of the job, it's difficult to put five, six thousand dollars worth of repair into it when you could put seven thousand or less and put something that's gonna get you out to a full road width. You know, and it'd be more usable.
I think it probably depends on how, what quantity we're talking about. And for example, I mean, just under the paved road, south of Sylvan to the interstate, I mean, there are quite a few stone arch culverts that you're not gonna justify digging up the pavement to replace. up the pavement to replace, rather than just getting someone in there who's a mason to fix the ends that have deteriorated, you know, some of that kind of, that I think needs looked at.
Oh, yeah, every location will be different.
Yeah, it'll change every location.
So what we need then on this map is a rating of which ones need what kind of thing, so that we can even tell someone where they're going to give us some bids.
Right, yeah, and then in the back of this report, we did develop like a, we call it a, like a maintenance list.
Okay.
So some of these, I think our inspector did make a note that, you know, it'd be good to add some grout or tuck point or something. So we were talking earlier, we're thinking maybe you could look through those and find those structures that need it and then identify which ones and then maybe do a project.
Yes, well, here's one, yeah, OS 25, tuck point stone.
Yes, that could be.
That would be right here, yep.
So then you can maybe identify using that tool.
Yep. Okay. I think we can definitely go over this information again. Thank you for that.
Yeah, and if you have any questions, don't be afraid to call me.
I don't mean to rush you out, but we do have some waiting appointments and we're running a little, we're a little behind, but I appreciate your time.
Yeah.
And maybe when we see you next month, we can go over this again, just as part of our, we'll schedule you in, you know, for maybe an hour and...
Okay.
And Michael, I sometimes I want to get with you, I'll get your number or something, just visiting your whole apartment and stuff, and all you guys, okay? Sounds good?
Yeah, great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good week. Hopefully weather will let us have a good week.
Yeah.
I apologize.
Always pause a day apart.
Steve, if you're ready, we'd have you.
I have two of them.
Come on.
You want both of these or just one?
I don't know, standing between dinner and you guys, it's gonna be good. I'm trying to make it short, I see you're running behind schedule, so I'm a little behind anyway. I guess I'm back to inquire about gravel road up to my lodge in my son's house. This is a resolution, I'm sure Mr. Wallace and Alexis have seen the resolutions the county has in place. Long story short, probably a couple commissioning, commissioner settings ago, several years ago, I asked for a gravel road and they told me my trailer house wasn't sufficient to justify a gravel road, but if I had been built, built the lodge, then they would gravel my road and so on the expectation of what they told me, we put in a lodge. And subsequently after that, my son moved the house in, so we have two tax entities there instead of one. And I rarely need a gravel road, just this last weekend, I've had to shift nine hunters to another location to some, another party, so those kind of deals cost me like $810. And I've had a couple others this, this year also, kind of down the same road, the roads are so bad, couldn't put people in there. And a couple weeks ago, I did have some hunters want to go in there in the mud, I ended up hauling them out three times during the course of a couple days. So I guess I'm asking about a gravel road on 50th Road and 45th Road up to my son's house.
How, how long would it be, how many...
Approximately two miles, it's a mile and a half to 45th Road and about a half a mile around the curve. Comes off Union Drive, one mile west off Highway 181 to 50th Road and then goes north.
Here's right here, right? I guess, yeah, because this is that 40 foot, okay, so here.
And it just also wouldn't just benefit me, it'd benefit my, a couple of my neighbors, Jay Barksdale has a hunting concern there and he needs to access his property and Lauren Heller's property line runs along there for a mile too.
What, what condition is that now, just dirt, dirt road?
It's a dirt road, there's, there used to be some natural rock in there and the county high graded it and we had a little dispute over that, but basically pull dirt up on top to existing rock and put really nice ditches on it, but it's so slick, you slide off, you're stuck, I mean, you get off the crown of the road, it does have a crown, you get off that edge of that road, you're done, you just slide down into the ditch and you're, there you are. Whenever it's muddy, I avoid that road because I know it's hazardous and I go the other ways where I know I won't get stuck, but I just gotta plow, plow, plow to get there.
I'll give you my position on it, this is in my district and I feel that I'm elected to advocate for my citizens and my taxpayers. I supported his request and we talked about how to share the cost, what that may entail. And I was told that previously, up through the eighties, that the county would do all the maintenance work and that the taxpayer was going to, I think, I don't want to misspeak, however that was set up, the taxpayer was either paying for just the hauling or the gravel and the hauling.
That's the old resolution right there.
Okay, so this is dated 1983 and it says this, it should become the policy of Lincoln County to provide the following services and graveling a road to a new residence where no gravel exists, which that qualifies because now he has a house and a hunting facility. The county will push and stockpile gravel in a mutually agreed upon pit, they will load the gravel, they will spread and lay the gravel and pay royalty to the pit owner, I suppose that's what that means. The landowner will be expected to furnish the trucks, which I assume, because we didn't have hauling trucks at the time, to haul the gravel and assume the cost thereof, or we didn't have extra trucks in the game, that's what that means. So at that time in 1983, the landowner was paying for the trucking of the gravel and we were paying for the gravel, collecting it and spreading it. And then this new resolution, that was 1983, this one is in the year 2000. The way that this reads to me, it was to alleviate the burden of the cost to the landowner. It says, Lincoln County Board of Commissioners recognizes the need to encourage and promote economic development within the boundaries of Lincoln County. We are a board dedicated to the enhancement of our community through increased population improvement of county infrastructure and other means vested within the powers of the board. Now therefore, be it resolved, Lincoln County Board of Commissioners on this 20th day of March 2000, to rescind this unnumbered resolution, so they got rid of it, providing for cost distribution and providing first time gravel to new residents. And they further resolve that they shall review each request for road improvement based on the merit of the request and formulate a decision on a case-by-case basis to encourage economic development of rural areas in Lincoln County. It's very vague, I understand that, and we can interpret it multiple different ways. What we ended up discussing several different times when Terry was on is the split of the cost and there was a proposal, I mean, I don't remember what my motion was, 70, 30 to the county or something like that, and Mr. Wallace motioned 90, 10, and that passed, that we were going to split the cost of the total project 90% to him, 10% to the county. That was the last time that we made a motion and it passed and we had some sort of agreement. And then we had a discussion where we proposed that the county would go in and prep the road and then Mr. Snyder was going to work out the gravel situation for himself. At that time, he came in and he expressed that he was not satisfied with the work that the county did because he had requested specific regions be re-gravelled and he was going to leave that, shut that rock shelf on the, on the hillside, there's a hillside going down into the dip where the driveway, or where the 45th starts up to his driveway. And so there was a dispute there over the way that the work was done. I don't feel that it's been resolved, as I said, I think that my position is to encourage that growth and since we do have a new residence there paying taxes, I felt that we were justified in spending more than 10%. I guess, I'm not sure what your proposal is at this point. I've been out there to look at the site.
Do you have any idea what it would cost the county?
Do you have that, or I don't have that on me today?
I think we had an agreement with him and we had arbitration and we left this meeting, agreed that what the agreement was going to be. And that money was put into escrow in the account and it never was done and as far as I'm concerned, that was our agreement, I think you were to pay for gravel and for hauling, and I think we'd come up to around $15,000, we doubled the price of gravel now, so that makes that quite a good deal for you if we would go back to that deal. But that's where we were, we, we did agree, we did agree. He sat here, a man sat here and did an arbitration with us and we left all agreed that that's the way it was going to be.
I have a copy of his, what he, what is put out and what he told you and what he told me and Mr. Krangle was different. And when he wrote it up, it was different than what the written agreement was.
Okay, and that, your problem is with him and he's a lawyer and I guess you need to turn him in. If he misrepresented you to us, and we were misrepresented to you, but we were represented through an arbitrator. And that's what, the agreement was pretty much what we agreed to, I believe. And if the attorney needs to enter into this, that's fine, she's here.
The agreement was to him, to us, that I would pay $5,000, you would gravel the road, I would put $5,000 in escrow, in, in an escrow account, not just, period, escrow account, and you would spend $1,000 of that every year putting new material on. That's what he represented to us. And when he got the written thing, that's the reason I didn't follow through is because it wasn't what he told us. I don't know what he told you.
Do you have that?
I do.
What he wrote up?
Somewhere here. There's the agreement that he wrote up. It was brought up at one of the other meetings and the question was asked if it was within the budget to gravel, grade the road, gravel the road? And the answer, answer was yes, it was within the budget of what the county does every year. So then it came down to the cost of gravel and I asked what the cost of gravel was and they said a dollar a yard at that time. I said I would buy the gravel. Subsequently, they recalculated distance of hauling, digging, the hauling and everything and it come up to, I don't remember, $17,000. And then that was the cost of grading the road and putting in a new culvert or two on that road for drainage issues, which needed to be done anyway. Out of the 10,560 running feet of that road from 50th to 45th and up, there's only about 2,800 feet up, there's two 1,400 foot stretches that needed attention, grading and reshaped and then culverts put in, but they re-graded a whole mile and a half, pulled dirt up on it, didn't break the rock, covered it up, now it's not as good to travel as it used to be. And now it's a gravel pit within about a mile of 50th Road right now, Zachal's recently purchased and opened up a gravel pit there. So it's very close proximity to a gravel pit, probably not the best gravel in the road, just like all the gravel, a lot of clay, but some gravel.
It does say in number two, the money advanced by Mr. Snyder is to be used specifically for this purpose on an as-needed basis, which would be just to those particular roads.
But it didn't have the language that he told me and I was like...
So if we were to go back to this agreement, is there some sort of amendment that you'd like to see, I mean, are you still... What is your position on this particular agreement?
I guess I'm back to the resolution, which I'm back to what the former commissioners had told me that they would do. I guess the county has a resolution, they told me that they would gravel my road based on that resolution, based on the economic impact and we pay in excess of $8,500 a year in property taxes, probably more now because it went up again this year.
So let me understand if you were, what Al Joe was saying, you, you had an issue with your attorney on what...
Not with my attorney, with the, what...
With the county's or... I'm not understanding...
It was not our attorney.
Not our attorney.
It was an mediator.
But we appointed, we appointed him, we did.
We agreed to the, to the mediator.
So they agreed, what was the agreement there?
He agreed with the mediator, we agreed with it.
The mediator wrote that up, that he was going to furnish $10,000 upfront and then we were going to, to do the work. And I think your concern was the follow-up on that because it, it appears as if that $10,000 was just going to go into the project.
Into the project, they could spend it any way they want. And they said the money would be held at the county, well, the county have a certified escrow account.
Right, we don't have a specific account.
Escrow account, and I'm looking at a, at a, as a real estate person, which I used to have a real estate license, escrow accounts are escrow accounts and they're monitored.
What do you suggest? I, I'm still not, I'm still kind of confused here, based on prior deal, what they're requesting now or what...
Well, I, I'm going to start at the top and say, I think the biggest problem is our resolution, we really need to, and I said this last year and we've done nothing about it, but we really need to redo that. The resolution in 1983 is very specific, it says we will do this, the landowner will do that. The new one that's been adopted now for 18 years basically says it's all wishy-washy and I feel like that's why we've been cornered into this position to try to cut a deal, we paid $1,200 to a guy to write up two pieces of paper, you know, we need to be more specific with what we say we will and will not do. But I guess you're here to ask that the county furnish the entire project for you based on the fact that you have put in a home and a structure that is now being on the, taxed on the tax... a home and a structure that is now being on the, taxed on the tax roll that wasn't there prior.
Correct. Based on what the former commissioners told me that they would do. And Dwight Heller had been to the meeting and reiterated what they had told me.
A lot of the discussion that we had is, we can't very well set a precedent by doing that. You know, it's, if you're going to just furnish a road, then someone could put it at the end of a six-mile dirt road, and then we're responsible. Someone could put a home there, and we're responsible maintaining that road from then on into the future. Which, again, comes back to the resolution. We need to be able to say A, B, and C is what we will do. And that's not clear. I mean, we, we really need to, to resolve that resolution. My original suggestion is that we take care of this issue with Mr. Snyder, and immediately, based on the situation, change our resolution and have justification for it. In that, in that context, I, I did agree to what Mr. Berschite wrote up with the agreement. I mean, we all agreed on that. But I do understand the frustration of paying taxes and not feeling that you're receiving anything for it. I mean, you do get fire service, ambulance service, and those kind of things, but they're not things that are regularly used. And I do hear the argument quite often that the rural people, the, the people who live in the more rural areas, their only expectation for their taxes is their road access. And so they don't find it adequate on many occasions. So I do understand that concern.
You know, when you have people staying out there, and they say there's a medical emergency, and an ambulance needs to get there. It's muddy. I don't know how that ambulance is gonna get there.
So what would you think to do, Alexis? I personally don't really want to, in my opinion, is to prove anything today. Because I'm not sure I totally understand what's all going on here. We have the original resolutions. We have Mr. Snyder with his earlier deal, where you had seventy, thirty, ninety, ten. You had a mediator. And now we have him coming back once. So we got all this going on at once here. So I don't want to make any decision to them.
I agree with that.
About any of this. That's where I'm at.
Would you be interested in just reading through the historical documents there at some point to get yourself up to speed, and then maybe we could deliberate on what?
In the future?
Yeah.
But I don't want to do that. Personally, I don't, don't know about, you know, speak for you guys, but that's where I'm at.
I understand that completely. Would you be okay with giving him some time to get caught up?
Absolutely.
So that he can...
And also, you was before ready to do with this mediator decision?
Well, that mediator decision, that would have been in, in advance of that right there.
Well, that was before this, okay. And now, since this has happened, you're not wanting to go back to that type of situation?
Not to go back to that situation.
Yeah, okay. Well, what, I don't want to maybe discuss it that much more. Like I said, I don't know all the details personally. And before I, I don't want to ask questions that I don't know what I'm talking about, so better not.
And we have filed, we have the files that have some of that information in it, so maybe Don could pull that up for you in the next... Maybe we could give us a couple weeks so that he can read everything he wants to read.
All right, okay, back in a couple weeks.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. DeeDee, we have your own schedule here. We're about fifteen minutes behind. Oh, no, I'm sorry, we're off now. Go ahead.
I'd just like to request a five-minute executive session in reference to what we spoke about last week, with the disciplinary action.
The board, did we go in with you at?
It was the transportation bus board.
Okay, okay.
I have some other things, but they don't need to be discussed in the executive session. But that thing does, but one, that does.
Okay. So that, that one is specific to the bus board? Okay, and are you just requesting?
Please.
Okay.
I just have an update.
Okay.
Did you have other things up too?
I do.
Do you want to start with that?
Why don't you do that?
Okay. Just in reference to what we spoke about on Friday. I contacted that K E M S A. And she actually said that we had a contract with them that is no longer binding. It ran out.
Okay.
So it would cost us thirty dollars to run that ad for thirty days or less.
Okay.
Or we could renew the contract for a hundred and fifty dollars for the year, and we can run as many times as many ads as we want for the year.
How often do you feel like we need to be advertising? I mean, I don't think you have too much turnover in the department.
Historically speaking, over the time I've been here, we're putting out maybe two ads a year.
So I think we just need to pay for it as we go?
If, if she's talking about KMSA?
Uh huh, yes.
It would be nice, and we have been a member of KMSA in the past.
Okay.
That comes with a, some benefits to the employees.
Okay.
Of having a squad membership through KMSA. Each employee would get an additional ten thousand dollars worth of life insurance through that. They would get discounts on training if they were sent to a conference. So that KMSA membership is something that I was planning to come ask for in the future. I just didn't want to pile too much stuff.
Do you think that's the same thing that they're talking about, the membership? Is that the fee, and then you, and then you get the advertising included in that?
Right, as many times as you want for an entire year.
Okay, well then, I, I think we should just go ahead with that. If you were going to advise that anyhow, it's not that much more money. I was thinking that was just the price to get advertising for the years. But you're saying that it's a, it's a membership to their organization?
And I don't know what level she's talking about. There's different levels. You can get individual memberships. Or you can get what's called a squad membership, which includes all your employees.
What did they say to you?
I think those two need to talk.
Okay.
And come back to us.
Absolutely.
But I don't want her to delay on the advertising, is my issue, because we're trying to get the ad out.
They can talk and make sure that you're both on the same page. Now, I don't have any, I think we probably need to belong, if that's benefit to the members. I just want to make sure that what we're paying for, and you're paying for, we're not paying twice.
Right.
So if you two talk, and go ahead and, and get the membership going, it would be, I would make a motion to that effect. If that, if you need a motion to do that.
Can we just, Don, can we just give her approval to seek out the KMSA membership, and she can bring us the bill? Let's do that. Is that, okay? I'm sorry. So let's do that then.
Yeah, I can do that, and I'll communicate with, if you need that.
Yeah, if you figure out what you want from them, and sign up for it, and then you can submit the bill to Don, and you make sure that the advertising then happens, that'd be great.
Okay.
I'll get it done today.
Thank you.
And then I have some past employee evaluations, six-month and year evaluations for new employees, that were given to me by Bob today.
Okay.
So I didn't know if you guys wanted to review these and approve them, or if you...
Are they for, are they for increase in wages?
Yeah, they're, they're past ones that should have been done like back in October.
So they didn't receive their increase?
So, so we need to get the re-increases then?
Okay.
Do we need to be in executive session to review those?
For review, yes.
So I think you need to keep them until we're in executive session.
Okay.
So we'll just add that to the executive session. Where's the, we're going to do, how many?
There's three there, at least.
Three evaluations for six-month wage increases?
Here is the certificate that you had requested from me.
Okay. The HR officer needs to have the certificate to be, well, let's read it. Designated Employer Representative Training. So that means she can handle all the drug testing. So this is one. So what are the other two?
The KDOT. KDOT.
Excuse me.
KDOT. And then there's a KDOT federal training.
Did you catch that?
Uh huh, I'm running that.
So you have two more to complete.
Okay. And then this is just kind of, essentially, basically, my supervisors, I just wanted you to know about.
Okay, so you are requested to appear for duty. Do you, would you like to maybe just put that in writing to us?
Sure.
When you might be missing?
Okay.
That way, there's a note in your own file, since you're the one that keeps track of people's time?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, I wasn't for sure who to report it to, but I didn't want you guys sick, and I just didn't show up for work, you know? And then I had a question on this, but I think maybe we probably should ask that in the executive session.
The job descriptions?
Yes.
Is that what you're pointing at? Okay.
So that's it, that's that from the executive session.
Okay, so let me get this straight here, what we're going in for. We have three evaluations for six-month wage increases. I don't think that needs to be in executive session, what you were just pointing at.
Okay, I just had a question on it. Is, are they supposed to be in their files? And you wanted to, a copy of all of them, or are you asking me to make sure everybody, I get a signed copy from everybody?
Okay, so let me explain to the board. In one of the classes that I attended for HR training, they said that the best thing you can do is keep each employee file completely up to date, and anything that they are agreeing to, as far as being an employee, needs to be signed. So my suggestion was, they need to have a signed job description in their file. And, I mean, I think that that should probably be standard for every employee, because when they're employed, they should, when they're applying, they should see their job description, and then when they are employed, they should be signing it and committing to the requirements of their job description. So I would say, yes, that goes in their file.
Okay, so anybody that's lacking one, then I need to get with, and gotcha. That's what I thought, but I wanted to be clear on that.
Okay.
Okay, that's it, other than what I need to discuss.
Okay, so we have the evaluations for wage increases, and we have a non-elected personnel. That would all be non-elected personnel, but it's also for disciplinary action regarding the bus board.
Correct.
The transportation bus, okay. Don, do you need me to read out the statute? That's awesome.
I can see, yes, that.
Okay, helps. Gotcha, all right. I move to recess into executive session for five minutes for the purpose of discussing employee discipline matter for the transportation bus board. And...
I don't think we can do two things in executive session, so do different things.
Okay, well, the...
I think we need a one for each one.
Well, they're both under non-elected personnel. I mean, I have no problem separating it, that's fine. We'll do five minutes for the employee discipline for Transportation Bus Board. Pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen two B. Number one, to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel with the commission and HR officer.
Can you actually name who, this is your representative?
Oh, I'm sorry, Alexis Flue.
So you don't have to name yourself, but your case?
Randy Lowman, Aljo Wallace, and DeeDee Case.
I'll second, I have a question.
Sure.
Have we been too specific? That the employee can be identified?
No, because if we were ever to come out of an executive session and actually make an action, it would be disclosing the actual name of a person. I mean, we can't, we can't determine how many employees any one particular department has. But we have to name the subject matter. And there's no references to what the actual issue is. It could be a non, we may be here to, to decide that it's a non-issue. If it was corrected, or if it was just a mistake, you know, we don't, we don't know that until we actually have a discussion.
Can you include your reconvening place?
The basement meeting room, the commissioner meeting room, in the basement of the courthouse. I understand your concern, but I don't think we can differentiate how many employees are employed by any one particular agency that we're overseeing, or organization, that we're funding.
Because my question is if, if we could just leave it as employee, that it was, that it was necessary to name the department.
Oh, the department?
That was my ques, that's, that was my point.
I understand.
That's my point. Because, you know, it's an employee, basically.
I understand what you're saying.
I'll ask the attorney that when she comes forward, but I'll leave it as, as is for now, I suppose. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, please respond to aye.
Aye.
We will be back in five minutes. Okay, I move to enter into executive session for five minutes for the purpose of discussing to review, for the purpose of reviewing, I suppose, employee evaluations for six-month wage increases pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen two B. Number one, to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel.
Are they, are we getting all six months, or is there a year?
I think one of them is a year. I didn't get a chance to read them. I just handed them to you when they walked in.
Oh, I gave them back to you.
Oh, did you?
Don, an edit?
Increases, just increases.
Evaluations for wage increases, thank you. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. With myself?
I see you don't have to name you guys, since you're the board going.
Okay, the board and, and HR Officer DeeDee Case.
Can you come in any location?
In the basement, meeting room, courthouse.
And Aljo's seconded?
Yes. Any discussion? All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 Okay, and I have...
We're sure about the time, right?
Which ones are six?
Six months, twelve months.
I believe so. I can double-check, but I believe I'm right.
I would move that we give Greg Nay a six-month increase. And I would move that we give a, for twelve months of service, give him a Emmett, is that his name? Emmett Howe and Colton Panzer, their twelve-month raise. Let's start it.
We have a motion and a second for increase on wages. Any further discussion?
Do you have two things?
At their anniversaries, whenever they are. I think some.
So they're retroactive?
Yeah.
Yeah. They're not in here, but I can look them up.
No, Randy did. No, Randy did.
I just need to add that in, stop typing and add that in.
If no further discussion, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, that was the end of our agenda, but we have, both of you, are you, to press for time?
Um, I just need like five minutes in exact to present some information to you that I've received from Bolston and Seifkin.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
If she jumps in front of you, okay.
From Mr. Hay and Bolston and Seifkin in reference to Lincoln Park Manor.
Okay, someone else want to do the pleasure?
You want to? No, I don't. Why move we go into executive session? Justification pursuant to KSA 754319 to B. And this would be for number two, right?
Yes.
For consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship.
Someone's going to present?
And with the president would be the current commissioners with the county attorney, Lincoln County attorney.
I think I have to say-
In Lincoln County, or Lincoln courthouse, in the commissioner meeting room.
And the, this blank space above is for correspondence from Attorney Hay?
Oh.
For Lincoln Park Manor?
Based on, executive session is based for attorney-client privilege with the Attorney Hay concerning the Lincoln Park Manor, Park Manor issue.
Yes.
Okay, so correspondence from Attorney Hay regarding Lincoln Park Manor?
Please. You never get the practice if you don't do. I'll, I'll second.
Throw, throw me to the wall. Need an attorney to read that thing.
Is there any, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Oh, did we say how much time? Five minutes?
Yeah.
Oh, we did not say how much.
For five minutes, please.
Okay. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Well, one will be, his will actually be the one about patients.
Yeah, and I need you in there.
But it's also about patients.
Okay. You mean you need another one today?
Yeah, about the ambulance.
Okay, so first, I'm just gonna say that what we've decided from the executive session is that we're going to attempt to have a meeting with Eric Otting next week. That's our, that's our only action.
So I'm gonna put that you reconvene, no action taken, and then you instructed
Yes.
to refer to arrange a meeting with Eric Otting?
Please. And then, we'll do his first, is that okay? Is that okay? It only needs to be five minutes, so.
You have to bury your cheek, Chidi.
Yeah, yeah.
I need to get mine out, so it's buried in my-
I stole one somewhere.
I need to just put one on the wall, is what I need to do. Okay, I move to recess into executive session for five minutes, for the purpose of discussing an ambulance bill.
It's one that's like for the treatment of a, in a public institution.
Here, I'm gonna say number ten, KSA, pursuant to KSA 754319 to B. Number ten, to discuss matters relating, relating to patients and providers permitted to be discussed in a closed or executive meeting. Pursuant to KSA 39-7119G.
With who present?
The Board of County Commissioners and the acting EMS director and the clerk of cour, um, sorry, county clerk.
And the reconvening location?
In the basement, meeting room of the courthouse. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye. I'll be distracted.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry to make you wait.
You're alright, you're alright, it's alright. Anything else?
Thank you so much for the time.
Okay.
I'll just move this quick. I'd received some correspondence from Bolston Seifkin on our ambulance reimbursement issue. I had them look at that, I think you weren't here, but they were, to see if it was, it was futile or not, or how we needed to deal with that regarding our reimbursement. I did receive communication that they advised us to dismiss that appeal, that we would not be able to collect any of that money. And they felt like it was a waste for us to continue to do so, and accrue continued attorney fees. So I told them that I would let you know. So we kind of exhausted all of those options that we could. We hired the people that deal with that, who are experts in that area. Dawn and I did have a conference call, lengthy conference call, in order to review that information, as well as providing all information that they wanted to see. However, that appeal is going to be dismissed.
It's unfortunate, thank you.
Thank you.
How much are you found? I'll go with lots later. Thanks for letting me sit.
We have concluded our agenda and done our executive sessions. Do you have anything else that we need to discuss? I have notes for next, next week's agenda. We may have Eric Otting. And we asked for that to maybe be after the meeting, or at the end, so that we have an executive session time with the auditor. And then, we wanted to revisit the EMS resolution, and the standby attendance pay rates, et cetera, and hopefully you have that by next week, so.
I do have two things.
Sure.
If I could.
Sure.
One of them needs to be in executive session, the other one is just more about the transportation bus. So, as one employee is absent, the state grant has been put on hold for transportation bus funds. Partly because when he completed the grant, if I understand it right, we said that we would commit the twenty thousand, and you guys signed the letter for it. But the budget worksheet doesn't balance out, and instead it has it being twenty-two thousand eighty-nine dollars. So the easiest solution is if you guys grant another two thousand and eighty-nine dollars towards it, or I contact the Black Camp cap program people and decide, figure out how we can amend their budget for their grant. But as of right now, they can't be approved until this gets fixed.
Are you saying it was a miscalculation in what our percentage was, as far as the, what the dollar amount equaled out to, or Nate, we're in the whole like two thousand and-
If my understanding is, is whatever Jerry put on the budget was that Lincoln County would pay twenty-two thousand and eighty-nine dollars, but what I wrote in the letter was twenty thousand, and that's what we budgeted in the county general fund for the bus funds. So the question is, is do you want to allocate two thousand and eighty-nine dollars? It's the simplest fix, and then I send in a new result, or a new letter? Or do we amend their budget completely? And do you guys have a preference?
My question is, who's going to end up doing that work? Because, why?
I'm sure that Paul could help me, but regardless, somebody from the county has to call. And I think, like, what Paul feels like is if you guys approve the two thousand eighty-nine dollars more, then I would do a new letter. And then it's just a matter of simply attaching the letter that Lincoln County is willing to give, twenty-two thousand eighty-nine dollars.
Instead of the twenty thousand.
Instead of the twenty thousand. And then it brings it into compliance, so that it could be processed on. If you don't-
That's the holdup on receiving their funds at this point.
Yes, if you don't, then I have to figure out how to amend the budget, which I can do. I-
Amend transportation budget order?
Yes, through the state.
When does that have to be done by?
Jerry told Paul that he was afraid that it would need to be done before he returned. So, and then by the time he come and talked to you, and there was a couple of weeks delay. And you can think about it for a week.
Well, you know, we're gonna need money, right? They're gonna need some money to dis, we pay the bills in January, probably.
I, their fiscal year runs differently than-
So that, do they have the cash? I guess that's my-
They do have, I believe, the cash right now.
In Lee's report, it just said they have like, mm, current balance, one ten of nineteen, was nine thousand eight hundred and eight.
And then we'll be doing half of their distribution here in January, so we'll be doing another ten thousand. I'm just not sure, I don't know, I don't remember what their cycle lands on. I don't know if it's July, but I know that Paul called a guy, and the guy said we had a little bit of time, but depending on how long.
Do you think Paul is capable of figuring most of that out? You can just assist him? Or do you feel like you're going to have to do it all? Because I think that makes a difference.
Honestly, I feel like it probably would be just easier if I did it. If I just called a guy, asked him what I need to do, and, and us do it. Or I was just send in the letter. So, you know, technically, when they need, when they need more money, they should bring it down. I mean, I know Jerry gave me his budgets, but I don't know if we really paid attention to that part of what the county match was.
I don't remember. I thought it was just, we, we looked at it and we thought, oh, it's the same as last year. I mean, that's why it was the twenty, that was twenty last year. What about the bus board? I mean, is, is there anyone on there that? I mean, ultimately, it's their responsibility, I'm going to say that. If they're going to continue to exist and, and manage that department, so to speak, they need to be doing that. And if they're not doing it, they need to make sure that their employee is doing it. But we did discuss that a little bit with the bus board, and they said that there was some changeover, because it used to be on paper, and now it's electronic. So I can see that there's an issue there.
Technically, probably all I would do is call the guy and ask him, how do I fix these numbers? Because either A, I fix what they're requesting and reduce it to, to get in the seventy-thirty split, or B, I resubmit a letter from us. Either or, and I don't want to pressure you guys, and I can find out how much work it is next, this, this coming week, and then you guys can decide from there.
I mean, I hate to spend two thousand dollars on a paperwork mistake, but it also depends on how much time it's going to take.
And I'm not sure they actually get everything that they budget to begin with, so.
What do you guys say?
Well, I guess I'd, I'd say you call them and see what, see if we can fix it, if we can.
Let me spend the money?
Two thousand eighty-nine dollars is actually not that big of a deal. I mean, it's money, but.
Okay.
And see, and see where the miscalculation was, too. I mean, you know, did they read his number wrong? I mean, you know, did he enter the, enter a number wrong or something? You know, we don't have any, I guess you don't have a breakdown, do you? How did he come up with twenty-two hundred instead of two thousand?
Or we, we give twenty thousand.
Twenty, yeah, twenty.
So, so I don't know, I don't know if when he was calculating the budget, he wasn't keeping in mind the seventy-thirty split. There may be some expenses, there's some expenses that they don't cover. So it could be-
So he didn't add those on to what our portion was going to have to be to cover everything, our reimbursement plus?
Yeah, I didn't want to-
I mean, it could be-
He came up with twenty-two thousand when he should have known we only had a twenty thousand dollar budget, right? That's all, but it happened, so it happened.
Well, and that's why it's important that department heads actually come and visit with you guys and bring their budget requests. So then that way, you guys know they're asking for more money, or less money. But I can, I can see how it happened, potentially, because he might have included, they might have said, well, these costs are included, so we're gonna reduce it out, but now you don't come into compliance. But, um-
You know, this, this is just a general statement, but it kind of reminds me, it seems like every time there's a shortfall in a particular department, or a budget issue, or something, and, and the budget has a lot to do with you as the clerk, and us as the commission. But it seems like anytime there's a responsibility that has been neglected, or paperwork that needs to be done, it always comes back to the clerk's office. And I'd like to know, what can we do as a commission to have expectations for these other paid departments to take on a little bit of that responsibility? The treasurer has their own issues to deal with, and the appraiser has their own issues to deal with. But it seems like we pay for assistance in these offices, and there might be a lot of downtime, considering how much more work is expected to go through the clerk's office that is not budgeted for, or timed out the year before. Do you see what I'm saying? Anytime there's an emergency, or a last-minute thing that needs done, it's like the clerk's office is supposed to pick this up. Now, she used to have two people in there, now she has one. And I'm just, you know, it's kind of interesting to me that the other departments have full-time positions of assistants, and their workload isn't fluctuating like that. So, then that's not for anyone to answer now. It's kind of just to throw out there, it's just something to think about.
Well, and I really feel like if Jerry was here, he would be taking care of this himself.
Sure, sure.
Unfortunately.
When is he supposed to be back? Any idea?
I'm not sure. I'm not privy to that info.
Yeah, I guess, probably out on a medical.
I do have, I would like to request an executive session, you can say yea or nay, it doesn't really matter. But I would like to discuss an employee in a family medical leave act issue that I have with that employee. And I have some documentation to present to you that I have prepared, because I'm sorry, I believe it should not wait until next week.
Sure.
What about HR? Do you need HR?
That's up to you.
Aware of the situation?
Yes. So in a way, we'll be discussing two issues. Human resources and also employee, I guess, so. And I'll say it in an open meeting if you want me to. I don't, I don't care.
Well, I don't know, do we need to be naming employees in open meetings?
I won't name employees.
I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion to go into executive session, but who do you want? Do you want to include in the discussion HR, or do you feel like it's better for you to just present the information to us, and then us decide that we need to do something, or consult with others?
I would do that.
Okay.
Yep, and I'll try to keep my comments on it.
I move to recess into executive session for 15 minutes for the purpose of discussing Family Medical Leave Act pursuant to KSA 75-43-19 to B. Number one, to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. Reconvening in the basement of the courthouse with the commission and the county clerk.
Okay, and do I have 15 minutes?
Yes. Do I second?
I second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is that a girl?
Um... I'll do, I'll, I'll do it again. I move to recess into executive session for 10 minutes for the purpose of discussing FMLA pursuant to KSA 75-43-19 to B. Number one, to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. Reconvening at, in, in the basement meeting room of the courthouse with county commission and county clerk. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
I think this is enough.
Okay. So Dawn, if you don't have anything else, that concludes the business for today. And Board of County Commissioners will stand adjourned until January 28 at 10:00 a.m. in the basement meeting room of the courthouse.